All right, so adequate notice of the meeting of the planning board was sent to the Esberry Park Press and CoStar, our official newspapers on June 30th, 2020, and posted at the municipal complex and on the Borough website. Do you pledge allegiance?
Please, I'll start it off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Hold on, Sal. Looks like Sal might be back.
Then we could do a roll call.
I'm mute.
Okay, Mr. Forte? Everybody, you've got to remember to unmute yourself before you talk.
Yeah.
Mr. Carvelli?
Here.
Mr. Protonentes?
Working on that mute button.
I'm trying. Here.
You got it.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Lindsay?
Here.
Mr. Marchese?
Here.
Mr. Valente?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Okay, so...
All right.
Do you want me to explain the meeting?
Because it's Thomas Al.
Let me first, again, please, explain the format, how this is going to run, and I'll welcome everyone.
Okay, so this meeting is going to run just like a public meeting. We have a few items in the beginning that the chairman will explain. And then when we get to an application, the members that are participating in the application, I will move you up to a panelist. That's where you'll be on video. Just let me know who in your group is participating, that I make sure everybody is a panelist. When we get to public comment, that's when the members of the public that are watching can comment. You all have to do is click the raise hand button. We will call on you one at a time. When you are promoted to talk, please give your name and address before you speak. And then when you're done, we'll move on to the next person.
And remember to spell your name, too, because we are trying to write notes along with the recording. One other comment I'll make on this, April, if you're not speaking, please mute your phone. Get very familiar with muting and unmuting your phone. I'll say that for the board's benefit more than anything else, so we can minimize background noise while while either the applicant or one of the board members is speaking. I'll start it off. Thank you, April, for that overview. Good evening and welcome to the July 20th, 2020, meeting of the Borough Belmar Planning Board. We'll have two applications this evening. We'll talk a little bit about that. We also have some business we do, we need to go through in advance of those applications. I'll start off with an approval. I'm going to take a little out of order. I'll ask for a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes from the May 18th, 2020, meeting.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Burke and Mr. Campbell. Roll call.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Carvelli?
Yes.
Mr. Protonentes?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
You've got that mute, though. You've got to remember to take the mute off.
Approve.
Thank you.
Mr. Marchese? He's got to unmute.
Yes.
Mr. Valente?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes, thank you very much.
By the way, Jay, if, and everybody, if you guys are muted, you can temporarily, temporarily unmute yourself by pushing the spacebar.
Yes, easy way to go back and forth. Thanks, Tom. Little, a little trick for the, for the experienced one on the phone. Thank you. So we have, the next item on the agenda is a brief workshop discussion. I'll ask our attorney, Mr. Kovacs, to go through the applications that we're going to be listening to or going through, excuse me, this evening. And then we'll talk a little bit about the stormwater ordinance. So if you don't mind, Doug, give us an overview of the two applications before us this evening.
For the first application that you have, the applicant is MMB 501 Seventh Redevo LLC. This is the property over at 501 Seventh Avenue. It's where the Methodist Church is. Basically, the applicant is looking for a major subdivision, that they're going to take the existing property and divide it into, once they're done subdividing, they're going to subdivide it into four lots. The applicant, the applicant is seeking to preserve an existing residential structure that exists at the center and also add to that structure. That's going to have frontage on D Street. What they're doing in that corner, essentially, is but for lot 101, which is the remaining lot or the existing lot that has the residential structure. They're going to have three residential structures, three residential lots, developed residential structures that are fronting on Seventh Avenue. And for lack of a better way to characterize it, rather than meeting the R-75 zone criteria, those three lots are really meeting the R-50 criteria, except for the corner lot there, which is also, again, 5,000 square feet. There are, as you can imagine, a number of variances that the applicant is seeking in order to achieve this. Basically, they're going to raise the existing structure, except for the one residential structure that I mentioned, and then develop it so that lot 101, which will be the lot in the corner of B and Seventh, will require... Where normally, in the R-75 zone, a quarter lot would require 9,000 square feet. They're only going to provide 5,000. That same lot, they're not providing the requisite frontage instead of 50 feet, excuse me, instead of providing 60 feet, they're providing 50. A minimum rear yard is going to be 38, but I should also mention here that the proposal in this instance is basically develop three lots that are fronting on Seventh Avenue with a rear lane access. That'll be a shared drive area. And similar variances are required for the other lots, except for the existing residential structure, which is conforming as to size and requires merely, requires two variances in addition, which is a minimum side yard setback, where five feet are required and 3.7 feet are provided in one of the lots, and the maximum height. In the existing structure, they're not adding on to it, but the existing structure exceeds the maximum height of the R-75 zone, where it should not be greater than 35 feet. And as it is presently presented, it's 37.4 feet. So we're looking at something sort of soup to nuts to take parcel that's presently developed with the residential structure that adjoins the Methodist Church, and then basically taking the Methodist Church out of it and developing it with a residential property. The applicant, if they're successful, needs to present C variance criteria for, for you. I imagine we're going to hear, I think, some combination of C variance by way of C1 and C2. Parship to the extent that they want to keep the existing residential structure there. And then I guess they may present some testimony under C2 that this, that what they're proposing is a better design plan for the, for this residential neighborhood than what's presently in existence, the R-75 zone. As I say, there's, there's a number of variances. I won't burden it with just the, the analysis at this point in time. We have a fairly comprehensive report from an engineer that I hope the applicant will go through and address those concerns. If approved, it will require a simple majority of those eligible to vote. Your next application is a, is a property that we should all be familiar with, if we put it that way. This is that parcel that we have looked at on a number of occasions. Number one, to designate it as the area in need of redevelopment. This is the parcel that's down on 900 Main Street, block 95, lots five and seven. You may recall that when we looked at this, we looked at the entire block that fronted on Main Street and in fact designated the entire area as an area in need of redevelopment. And then subsequently, mayor and council proposed a redevelopment plan. You may recall that we convened a hearing on that matter. The applicant is now coming to present a project which is conforming to the zone criteria by the way of a, it's a mixed-use property. What they're going to do is have residential structures on the upper floors and then commercial development on the first floor with onsite parking. Then some of it in the parking area to the rear, some of it, I believe, behind in the, in the existing structure, basically behind the commercial property. You've seen this done before, the residential sort of, sorry, the commercial creates sort of like an exterior facade, and then behind that, we have parking. Again, it's a fairly comprehensive report. I think that there are, because it is conforming and because the existing structure, I think there's a couple of things that you take a look at for variances. One is they have a tandem parking. In a sense, there's some stacked parking. That isn't technically permitted in the redevelopment zone, but they're proposing that as one of their, one of their variances. And I believe, see... That may be, at this point, the only variance that's required, but I will, I will stand corrected if the engineer suggests that there are additional variances. Ultimately, what's happening is you may recall that this property was the property that had sort of been fallen into disuse. This was the bank property on the corner with the lot to the rear, where there's a drive-in and a, and a driveway area. During the course of the review of the development plan, a variety of people came out, expressed concerns about the height of the structure, distance from residential structure. It appears that as to height and as to distance from the residential structure, they are conforming as to what the zone requirements ask them to meet. And it's not a subdivision, it's, it's a site plan. They have some architectural renderings, they'll walk through it. I hope, again, as I say, that they will walk through the engineer's report, explaining or at least addressing the concerns of the engineer. As to the stormwater management, the final, final matter before you. If you want to get into the reads, that's above my pay grade. We're going to have someone from Jerry Christine's firm address some of those issues. But suffice it to say, from sort of your planning board attorney's point of view, these are requirements that we have to, these are changes in the ordinance that we are obliged to make by law. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection required these controls to be put in place. There's some, there's some differences as to how we're defining what properties come, come within this ordinance. But ultimately, this ordinance is formally addressing, I think, many of the things that this board has already addressed by way of trying not to divert water off-site, but to allow it to recharge on-site, set forth what the, what the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection required or says are best practices. So you're going to see things, terms like rain garden, you know, dry wells, green roofs, small scales, cisterns, infiltration basins, those things that are particularly important in Belmar, where if you, if you constantly divert the water, take it out, don't put it back into the water table, you begin to have, for lack of a better way to put it, saltwater incursion. You've got a lot of pressure from the ocean, you know, just short distance away. So the more that you can keep the water at the site, recharging it as opposed to diverting it and taking it off-site, the better for the hydrological cycle. So that's basically what it is, but I would rather have Jerry or one of, or someone from his office go into the details. For the most part, this sets the, the minimum standards. It has to be done. If there's something down the line where Belmar wants a higher standard, it may be difficult to do that because most of these are designed to be uniform, unless there's a specific reason to deviate from what the NJPSA. Generally, these are incorporated almost en masse with very, very few changes. Jerry, I don't know if you want to make a comment to that at all, or if someone else is going to come in, or should we just wait for, when we go for the ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, we can...
Question, Jerry, before, Doug, before you move on. I know the DEP basically put this amendment in place March 2nd. The changes to the Belmar stormwater control ordinance, is that effective immediately? What, what was or is the timing of this change?
These will have to be in place by March 21, 2021.
Okay.
I, I believe, anything that's in the pipeline that's approved before March 21, or March 20, 2021, has the, has the old standards. Anything after that, the new ones will apply. Leave to Jerry, if, if we enact this, I think we, I think it becomes a factor in Belmar at the date of enactment. Once, once we enact it and then appropriate timeline goes, then if we didn't do anything, these would be in place.
Okay.
Agree with that?
Yeah, and, and that's correct. And I would like to deputize Doug, and he can give this to my other clients. So he handled it very well. Everything he said was right on board. It's standard language provided by the state. Every town, every, every town in the state has to adopt it by next March. We're just a little ahead of the curve in Belmar here, getting everything ready and getting the ordinances approved.
So at this point, Doug, my assumption is we should move for an approval of this Belmar stormwater control ordinance change from the boards. Should we roll call and seek a motion to approve it?
I, I would, I'm just out of abundance of caution. You know, this is our public meeting, and though generally we would not, you know, our role with regard to reviewing ordinances, it's, it's, it's a very, very fundamental role, if you will. It's, it's, you know, doesn't meet with, you know, the requirements of our zone plan and zoning ordinances. And if so, we report on favorably. But I'm also a proponent to allow people, once we get there, if people want to make public comment on that, to allow them so that they understand what's being done. We can address that, then pose that public portion, just on that portion of the ordinance. And then I would suggest you make your, you take your roll call and vote.
Okay, so at this point, given where we're at, Jerry, I'm not sure if you wanted to add anything. It sounds like between you and Doug, you pretty much covered what we're looking at in this change to the Belmar stormwater control ordinance. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair.
Jay, Jay, Nick here, I have a question.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's roll it around the board for questions, Nick, so thank you.
And if, and if I can, I may want to, April, if you could let Turner Shell in. I think he's on board.
He's ready to go.
Turner, are you there?
He's muted, but he's there.
I'd like Turner to answer the questions, because he's the one in our office that's preparing them for all of our towns for consistency. So.
He's unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you, Turner.
All right, Nick, go ahead, please, your question.
Yeah. Now, was this brought about to mainly have the municipalities echo the NGAC stormwater regs? Or were there an update to the BMPs, the Best Management Practices, in the stormwater regs that were more stringent than the 2004, 2007 revisions, the ones that I'm familiar with?
These are more stringent than the ones that were done about 10 years ago, the 2004, 2005. That's correct. But all municipalities have to pass this, this, and just, just one point to step back for a moment is, after it's adopted by Belmar, it has to be approved by the Monmouth County Planning Board, because they are the review agency. But to answer your question is that these regulations are more stringent. They're emphasizing greener infrastructure, as Doug mentioned. And they, there's a whole lot more regulations and, and technical stuff that they've put into this to try to get people to do rain gardens and bioswells and things like that closer to the source of the, of the actual stormwater.
One more question. I know that there is a quarter acre, one acre threshold of disturbance impervious surfaces that trigger the rules, but in terms of runoff curves, time of concentrations and peak flows, is there, if the project doesn't meet that threshold, do they still have to design to those standards? Or are they exempt from the application and the standards?
Well, Jerry might be able to answer on this, but they'd have to meet. If they didn't meet this trigger, then the residential soil standards would probably kick in. One area that they did add, though, to this new ordinance is they also added a quarter acre of highway surface, or in other words, like parking lots and things like that. So it's not just impervious surface, but it's also like highway surfaces as well. So that's one area where they made it a little bit more stringent. But it's mainly for major development. So again, it's the same threshold that one acre and of disturbance, and then one quarter acre of impervious or highway surfaces.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I'll open it up to the public for comment, or question, rather. If you'd like to make a question, or excuse me, pose a question to our consulting, please raise your hand, and April will bring you into the conference room. And if you're not speaking, please mute your phone.
No public.
No public? All right, so Doug, I know because it's an ordinance, we can't approve, but we can take a roll call to, and seek a motion to view this favorably, and then seek a roll call on that favorable viewpoint.
Yes, usually what you do is you direct me to address any concerns that you have with this particular ordinance to mayor and council. I then fax something, you will circulate that before our next meeting, but you can certainly direct me to do that. So I usually like to circulate it to you, so make sure I've covered anyone's comments. So if there are any particular concerns that you have, give those to me at this point. Let me put those in a writing to mayor and council, otherwise it would be in forms to the zoning ordinances and zone plan.
And I didn't hear anything from any of the board members that were seeking any kind of revision or edits to this. So I'll ask April just to do a quick roll call to make sure everyone's in favor of this, and we can ask you to send that message to mayor and council, if you don't mind, Doug. April, can you do a quick roll call, seeking support in terms of this ordinance change?
Sure, and I just want to note for the record that Rick Meyer is now joining the meeting.
Oh, good evening, Rick, how are you? Good to hear you're on.
Hello. Did we start early? Did I miss the memo?
It's six o'clock, we did start early. We were catching...
Apologies.
I'm sorry, was there a motion? Did I miss that?
I'll make a motion to, to, to look upon the proposed Belmar stormwater control ordinance changes favorably on behalf of the board. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Carvelli?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Approve.
Mr. Protonentes?
Approve.
Mr. Valente?
Approve.
Mr. Lindsay? Let me unmute, you know, mute.
Approve.
Okay. Mr. Burke?
Yes, approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Epstein.
Okay, and Mr. McDermott?
Approved.
All right.
Like, Sal Marchese may have left the meeting. I'll keep an eye out to see if he comes back.
Okay, for the record, thank you.
He might be back, hold on.
Let's bring him back in before we start the next, the next session.
There he is.
Hey, Sal, glad you're back with us. All right, I'll make a couple of comments before we bring the professionals in. We have two applications. Given the number of participants on the line, my assumption is there's going to be quite a bit of time dedicated to both presentations as well as questions during the public portion. Given the length of time, if we find ourselves application runs too long, or we end up running out of time, we may have to carry one application to the next meeting. But we'll do our best to try to bring both applications through the process tonight. So what I'll ask the board to do is hold your questions until our, our, our professionals are done presenting so that we can be as efficient as possible. And then I'll roll call through the board to seek any questions before we go to the public. So at this point, April, if you could turn it over to our first application. First application is that of MMB 501 Seventh Redevo LLC at 501 Seventh Ave.
Okay, Bill, is it anyone else talking besides you and Rich?
My real, yeah, there we go, great. Yes, I'm going to have Bishop John Scholl, myself, Mr. DeFalcone, Mr. Kinsel, David Kinsel, Mary B. Hearn may testify.
Okay, are they all with you?
Well, but Ms. Hearn is with me.
Let me see.
Oh, Rich DeFalcone, I'm sorry, Rich is now, hello, Rich, Rich is on.
There's, I see Mary, hold on.
It's like Mary's just on phone, correct?
I'm not sure how she's coming in, so she might have been zooming, but maybe we can see if she's on the phone and she could hear us.
Unless it's a different Mary.
Mary Hearn, if you're on the line, please make sure you type in your last name so we know which Mary it is. At this point, we can't be sure, Bill, whether that's your professional or not.
Okay, I don't want to keep that from moving forward. We'll see what we do with Mary there.
Yeah, if Mary is in the audience in the participant group, please raise your hand to let April know you're out there.
To the chair?
Okay. Yes. Yes, Doug.
Take care of a couple of housekeeping items.
Please.
April, may I ask you to confirm that we have jurisdiction over this? Did we receive our mailings, ring cards? The applicant received it?
Yes, we received it.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction. Bill, I don't know how you want to do this. Generally, I would swear in everyone now so that we weren't going back and forth. If not all of your folks are here, I'm going to leave it to you when you bring them on to remind me to swear them in so that we can do that. I see Mr. DeFalcone.
Mr. Kovacs, good evening, good evening, members of board, Mr. Chairman, members of public. For the record, William J. Shakers, Shammy Shakers and Montzke, both Belmarnes from book on behalf of the applicant. And in this matter, there are co-advocates. It's the Methodist Church as well as MMB 501 Seventh Ave Redevo LLC. Mr. Kovacs, I think you should swear myself in a very limited capacity. I am the sole member of MMB 501 Seventh Ave Redevo LLC, and will perhaps offer limited testimony. To my right is Bishop John Scholl. offer limited testimony. Uh, to my right, uh, on his, uh, is Bishop John Scholl. Uh, he is a representative of the Methodist Church. Uh, also here is David Kinsel of North End Builders. Uh, you can swear all of us and I assume Richie De Falco or Richard De Falco, JKR Engineering, who is on screen now. And then that would only leave Mary if we have her popping it.
Okay. Ask the folks that are present with you, Mr. Shipers and Mr. Falco, if you could take yourself off of mute at this point in time. I'll wait to see that you've done that. Gentlemen, uh, do you solemnly swear the testimony you give before the born with truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Please state your name, spelling it for the record, please.
William J. Shipers, S-H-I-E-S and P-E-R-S. Swear to tell the truth.
Uh, John Scholl, S-C-H-O-L.
Swear to tell the truth, Doug. You swear or, or you do swear?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kinsel?
Uh, David Kinsel, K-I-N-S-E-L. I swear to tell the truth.
I hear you, Mr. De Falco.
Nope.
No sound.
There's no sound, Mr. Falco, but did you understand your oath? Can you nod to say yes if you understood your oath? Do you solemnly swear that you swear affirm that you're going to tell the truth? That's a yes also. I accept that. Remind me when Ms. Hearn comes back on. And the only other housekeeping matter that I'd like to do, and we tried to coordinate this with Mr. Shipers' office today, uh, we do have an exhibit list. Um, try to get through this quickly. A1 is the application inclusive of the checklist of 12 pages dated June 2nd, 2020. A2 is the major subdivision plat prepared by AL, ALPS over the signature of Ronnie Van Husse, June 2nd, 2020. A3, JKR Engineering.
Zoom in the planning board meeting.
Bill, remember to mute your line.
Okay. Uh, the first sheet is the title sheet. Second sheet is the existing consistent sheet. Third sheet is the soil erosion and sediment control plan, again dated June 2nd, 2020. That's marked A3. A4, JKR Engineering Stormwater Management Report, Traffic Report and Environmental Impact Statement on one document, as I say, marked A4 dated June of 2020. Uh, A5 will be an aerial photograph. A6 will be another aerial photograph. A7 will be another a photo, another aerial photograph. I'll have Mr. Shipers explain in greater detail what we're looking at when we get there. If he can mark those A5, A6, A7. A8 is a photo of the street view of the existing church, corner 7th Avenue. A9 is a photo, street view of the existing church, D side, D side street, the D Street side, rather, excuse me. A10 is a photo of D Street. A11 photos of a street view of existing church, 7th Avenue. A12 is a photo of 7th Avenue existing across the street. PB1 is the borough engineer report, uh, from, from our borough engineer over the signature of Kristen Bell. Um, I believe that that includes all the exhibits that Mr. Shipers and I discussed. The floor is yours unless the chair has something further.
Thank you, Mr. Kovas.
And we, um, before we get in, Bill, can we, Mr. De Falco, I know you were trying to see if you can, we can hear your voice. Okay. Yeah, we're good. We can hear you. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Shipers, all you.
Uh, thank you. I will try to be comprehensive, uh, but I will also understanding your, uh, amount of people out there and the evening. I will try to also be succinct and get to the meat of this promptly. Um, the, uh, a very, just very brief overview, and then I'm going to call my first witness. This is property located at the corner of 7th Avenue and D Street, uh, currently existing. Mr. Kovas was about three quarters correct. Uh, the last quarter is there is a large school building also on the property with the church and with the rectory. Uh, the property size is 150 by 150 square feet, uh, equally existing on both D and 7th Avenue. Uh, this was a matter wherein the, uh, council of the Methodist Church, who have been represented by Mr. Scholl, uh, made a determination, uh, either a year or months ago, that, uh, they wanted to do something with their property. There was a very extensive, uh, requests for proposals that were put out to the public. Uh, there was several levels of, I think, vetting that Mr. Scholl or Bishop Scholl talked about. Uh, they had ideas and priorities. I want to thank, um, Bishop John Scholl for choosing myself and my team to be co-applicants. Uh, my LLC, it's a single purpose LLC, just for the redevelopment of this parcel, where the contract purchasers of the property in the event of approval, uh, we do not own the property, property is owned by the Methodist Church at this juncture, uh, with a favorable vote. Uh, we will ultimately execute all of the recommendations, promises, plans set forth in this application and move the Methodist Church down the road, uh, to their ultimate goals. Uh, to our happiness and to the town's happiness and delight. Um, Bishop Scholl has chosen the existing rectory on D Street to be his permanent retirement, um, home is his desire as well as the church's and my LLC's desire to subdivide off the existing 50 by 150, uh, existing home, assist contractually in, uh, raising the antiquated decrepit garage, uh, assisting, uh, rebuilding a two car garage, in-ground pool that is also enclosed for the lifelong hopefully pleasure and delight of Bishop Scholl and his family. Uh, it requires, uh, some variance work. It requires, I think, some, uh, sensitivity in looking at the property and parcel. And we had many objectives. One of the objectives was to try to eliminate, uh, multiple driveway. On 7th Avenue, uh, we wanted to have a beautiful streetscape on 7th Avenue. We wanted to approach the, uh, the parking and access via a eased access lane across the three properties on 7th. Cars would be in the back, uh, behind the homes. Never the chance that you're going to see cars parked in driveways in front yard setbacks. I think this is the most beautiful way to preserve that. You've seen other, um, developments that I've done in that fashion, the tropical pub with a rear easement, um, the, uh, the old Reggie's parcel and property, uh, in such a fashion. And as well going back to when I, uh, believe I had brown or blonde hair, the Playland Development to serve the, uh, the rear access of those properties. Uh, the variances, uh, I would not submit are overly significant, uh, notwithstanding what I routinely present to the zoning board and what people are building within the town. Um, because of the treating it as an, uh, R50 or I50, the, uh, building coverage requires some, some small deviation. Uh, the, uh, um, size of the lot, uh, we're calling out 5,000 square foot lots, but we're still maintaining the 50 foot front, uh, front yard setbacks on two of the, the three, actually three of the four, the corner would require a 60, but that is a, um, uh, something that's throughout, not only the town, but across the street, uh, properties just simply do not have. We're limiting far so we do not have to go too far, uh, variance request and to stay within this board as opposed to going to the zoning board. If, if in fact we were forum shopping, we choose not to do that in places in your more than capable hands. Uh, we're not violating other than the existing home height nor story. Uh, and while there are some, uh, variances on our lines, there are predominantly one line, you'll see the variances across. There's a rear yard setback of 38 feet. We requested a 40 foot minimum, and this is something we will discuss with you. Uh, that allows, uh, the potential purchasers of these homes to design to the 75% far in the event that, uh, what we wanted to limit that, we could always make a 40 foot rear yard setback, eliminate three potential variances that would reduce the sizes of the homes by about 160 or 70 square feet overall. But we've been trying to maintain, uh, flexibility for potential, um, end users. That is effectively the application. Uh, we're going to, uh, present Mr. De Falco ultimately shortly, who's going to talk about the existing, um, setup as well as, uh, Bishop Scholl. And without further ado, my next and first witness would be Bishop John Scholl.
Thank you very much and, uh, grateful for having this opportunity to, to talk with you today. I live at 701 D Street. I live, uh, on the, on the property in the house that has existed there now. Uh, I'm the bishop for the United Methodist Church. I oversee, uh, here in New Jersey, 500 United Methodist congregations across the state. Um, the United Methodist Church has had a wonderful relationship with the town of Bellmar since the 1800s. And, uh, the first, uh, church that we built was actually on Main Street and, uh, that was moved to the present site, uh, when the town wanted to do some development on Main Street and we graciously, uh, accepted and moved the building, actually that was on Main Street, uh, to the present location. Uh, the church continued there. It added some additions and, uh, also in the early 1970s, it had a fire, uh, destroyed the sanctuary building. We rebuilt the building that is there now. Um, one of the things that's happened, uh, for churches all across the state in New Jersey, not just United Methodist churches, is that congregations have been shrinking and, uh, it's been very difficult to maintain congregations. In a seven mile stretch from Asbury Park to Spring Lake, uh, we have seven United Methodist churches, which is just really too many churches, uh, for this area. We did everything we could to continue a congregation there. Uh, we actually worked with community. Uh, we did several different projects, created a special project of ours, uh, to try and, uh, redevelop the congregation. Unfortunately, the things that we tried, and particularly in the beach community with 50% year round residents, it just wasn't possible. We then looked at what are other possibilities and we looked at a community center. As a matter of fact, we had a wonderful relationship with the town of Bellmar, um, hosting a community center there that, uh, the, uh, town ran, uh, which provided services for seniors, also had, uh, food, uh, for people, other educational classes. Um, but at the end of last year, we came to the place where, uh, it wasn't feasible economically for the town of Bellmar nor for the United Methodist Church to continue, uh, that particular ministry and program. We, uh, moved our food, uh, delivery over to the west, to West Bellmar and continue that ministry there. Uh, but we just had no more use for the present structure. Uh, we began to think about what would be next. And, uh, quite frankly, in every community that we're in, we try to be good neighbors and we try to really do what's best, uh, for the community. As a matter of fact, we talked about three things we want to bring to every community. We want to bring value. Uh, we want to bring, uh, service to the community and we want to bring beauty to the community. And so even when we sell a piece of property, um, this has been sacred space for us and we want to do everything we can to honor other people in the community. We looked around at a lot of, uh, different alternatives and decided, uh, and had actually people come to us, um, and decided that a building homes on that site would be the best use for the community. There are others that wanted to build condos or apartment buildings and we just did not even entertain that because we did not think it would be, uh, best use for the community. We, uh, looked at, uh, several different, uh, developers and builders and made this choice, uh, largely because of other homes that have been building the community and the quality of those homes, uh, by this, by this particular group. Um, we are at the place now, um, where we're hoping that this project can move forward. We wanted to move forward for a couple of reasons. One is, uh, we really do think that this will add value and beauty, uh, to the community and serve, uh, the community with new residents. Uh, the other is, quite frankly, we have dedicated the sale of this property, uh, to help with COVID-19. And, uh, the proceeds of the sale of this property will go toward food distribution, um, uh, that we're working on across the state of New Jersey and also work with people who are out of work. And, uh, so, uh, none of the proceeds will, uh, actually come to the United Methodist Church. It will all be given away, uh, to help other people. Personally, I have, uh, an interest in this, uh, piece as well, as Mr. Shipers has shared. Uh, my wife Beverly and I have lived here in Bellmar, uh, when I became the bishop here in New Jersey. Uh, we moved into this residence shortly after Sandy. We redid the whole residence because of, uh, damage, uh, during Sandy. And we've really come to grow and love the community and the people in this community. We love being able to walk to the hardware store, the post office, restaurants and all kinds of other things here in Bellmar. And so this is a place that I not only want to finish out my ministry here, uh, in New Jersey, but also, uh, be a resident after I retire. So, you know, just in summary, uh, we've appreciated the strong relationship, the good relationship that we've had with the community of Bellmar. We want to continue that. We think this is the best use, particularly as we looked at the, at the lot and how it could be best used, how it matches up with the houses across the street. Um, and also, uh, the team that would be working on this will just bring, uh, a great product, uh, to, to Bellmar.
Uh, thank you, uh, Bishop Scholl. Uh, I think I'm going to reserve Mr. Kinsel for the end if there are, are building and construction, uh, type questions after if in fact Mary testifies. Uh, Rich, are you, uh, ready to go?
I'm ready.
Okay. Uh, could you identify yourself and briefly your credentials, notwithstanding, uh, your familiarity with this board?
Yes. Uh, Richard De Falco, Licensed Engineering Planner, State of New Jersey, since, designated since 77, a long time ago, and a planner since 81. A graduate of Rutgers University. I own JKR Engineering, been in business over 40 years. Civil engineering. I've done a lot of work in Bellmar. I love the town and, uh, looking forward to this application.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based upon, uh, Mr. De Falco's, uh, recitation therein and any prior potential knowledge of Mr. De Falco's numerous work in Bellmar, I'd move him to be an expert in two fields, both in engineering and in the field of planning. And if Rich, you, uh, would just give us some very basic information on both your engineering and your planning background and the testimonies you've offered across the state.
I've testified before the, the borough, uh, planning and zoning boards, uh, dozens and dozens of times in the past, uh, 20 years. I've testified in front of almost every planning board in Monmouth County, uh, half of Ocean County, onsite plans, subdivisions, both planning and engineering testimony.
I would move him as an expert both in engineering and in planning.
Mr. Shipers, we accept his credentials in both engineering and planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Rich, uh, your, uh, chore in this matter, you were retained by, uh, NMB, without me saying the full, uh, name of that LLC, uh, to consult with, uh, Bishop John, uh, and myself and to, to do an overview and look at this, uh, existing parcels that exist at this time. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And, uh, I'd like you first to take, uh, the board through from your perspective and utilizing whatever, uh, charts or, uh, documents submitted, including aerials, photographs and things of that nature. I'm going to open it up to you in a lot of ways for you to describe for the board and the members out there in the public what currently exists, not only onsite, but offsite in the contiguous area.
All right, sure. So let's start with onsite. So let's start with onsite. We have the church attached to the churches of school. There's the parsonage or the residential dwelling and a small garage behind that. That exists on the property today. It is taking up fifty-eight point six percent of the lot with the building. So the building, those buildings together, fifty-eight point six percent of the site is covered by building. In addition to the building, there are sidewalks, driveways, concrete pads. The total of the impervious on the existing site is seventy-four percent. So that twenty-two thousand five hundred square foot lot has seventy-four percent of it covered with impervious surface. The neighborhood on three sides is an R seventy-five zone. The lots across the street directly on Seventh mirror what we're proposing, they are fifty-foot wide lots. Each of them have a single-family dwelling on them. The corner lot-
That's shown, Rich, on your submissions, page one of three, where you have the site and the two-hundred-foot list, and you're showing the contiguous lots.
And can, Rich, you bring up documents? Can you share documents on the screen? Is that something you want to do or are you just going to talk through them?
I will if I know how to do it. Somebody tells me how to do it, I'll do it.
April, does he have the ability to share documents, share screen?
I don't think so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy that he's not on mute right now. I'm trying to take him verbally through, make reference to the premarked exhibits. Mr. DeFalco, I think you were probably on when you heard that A three has been marked as your three-page submission. I direct your attention at page one of A three, which has your two-hundred-foot geographical map showing the site and the contiguous lots, both on Seventh and D at the four-way intersection.
Yes, page one of A three is the cover sheet of my set of plans. And on the cover sheet, there's a tax map with our site in the center and a two-hundred-foot radius lines run around it directly across the street in block sixty-four. Lots seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, those are the three fifty-foot lots I referred to as being directly across the street from our proposed redo lots.
And they are fifty-foot wide lots, correct?
Yes, they are fifty-foot wide lots.
And the proposed lots that we're proposing on Seventh are also fifty-foot wide lots, correct?
That is correct.
Continue, please.
The corner lot is fifty feet wide but only eighty-two and a half feet deep. So that's an undersized lot in the R seventy-five zone directly across from our corner lot. We're proposing five thousand square feet, which is larger than the lot across the street from us on the corner. At the opposite corner, the northwest direction, block sixty-three, lot eleven is the other corner lot, which forms the corner of D and Seventh. And that lot is fifty by one hundred. That's the corner lot on the north side of Seventh, on the east side of D. And that lot is fifty by one hundred, is what we're proposing for our corner lot, which is at the opposite side of D and Seventh from that lot, number eleven. To the east of our property, across D Street, is a different zone. The zone across the street from D is the R forty zone. The R forty zone has, within our one hundred fifty, one hundred fifty feet of frontage on our property, there are four dwellings across the street in the R forty zone. We're proposing two dwellings, one being the existing residence that the bishop will reside in, and the second would be the corner lot. So we're proposing two homes fronting on D. On the other side of D, in a different zone, there are four homes existing on D. Just to set the tone of the neighborhood, four houses across the street on D, a corner lot, fifty by a hundred, a corner lot, fifty by eighty-two and a half, and then two fifty-foot wide lots. So that sets the tone. To the west, there are consistent fifty-foot wide, single-family lots with a home on each one.
From a planning perspective, I'll jump over here even though you're explaining the existing, let me jump into your planning testimony. From a planning perspective, do you feel that there is consistency and an appropriate use of the land more consistent with the master plan for there to be three fifty-foot wide lots fronting on Seventh Avenue versus what is currently existing?
Yeah, I do. We're not changing the character of the neighborhood. That's the main thrust of the presentation. The neighborhood characteristic will be the same, actually improved from what's there today, which is building right up to the sidelines, a lot of coverage, a lot of building coverage, and lot impervious coverage.
Let me dial back briefly. You were kind enough to give the board the existing building coverage at fifty-eight percent. Is that correct?
Fifty-eight point six percent building coverage, yes.
And if you go to your zone chart on the same sheet, one of three, your proposed building coverage is about twenty-five percent less or almost approaching almost half the building coverage that will exist once and if this project is approved at thirty-two point seven percent. Is that correct?
Right, three of the three new lots which are proposed at fifty by one hundred would have a thirty-two point seven percent building coverage. And the bishop's home would have a thirty point three percent building coverage.
A dramatic decrease on, in particular, the three lots being subbed by from fifty-eight to thirty-seven percent. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Notwithstanding though, thirty is required. So we're looking for less than a ten percent variance for building coverage as proposed,
Thirty percent is allowed, thirty-two point seven is what we're proposing. So two point seven percent above the standard.
Less than ten percent overall of the building coverage is what we're asking for for variance, correct?
Yes, less than ten percent increase above the standard.
Now, jumping back to what you also talked about, you're kind enough to tell the board that the existing impervious is seventy-four percent. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's a pre-existing variance condition, correct?
Yes, it is.
Proposed by the applicant would be conforming not to exceed fifty percent lot impervious. Is that correct?
The lot impervious, yes, the lot impervious is fifty percent on the three fifty by one hundred foot lots, and the bishop's lot would have fifty-one point six percent proposed impervious.
So the applicants effectively are asking for a one-third reduction of impervious than exists currently today, correct?
That's correct.
From both a zoning and from a planning perspective, is that something that is a positive event for this site overall, notwithstanding impervious, but for water, for retention, for runoff, for a static view?
Yes, it's both the water, from the water point of view, less runoff, more infiltration, and taking away the large impervious and the large building increases the amount of open space, which provides light air to the neighborhood. So you're taking away a large structure, replacing it with three smaller structures, improving the ability for the soil to receive more groundwater and for there to be less runoff to the borough system, which winds up in Silver Lake eventually.
And so on the building coverage, I don't know if I covered it or not, but the applicant is requesting no building coverage variances across the board, correct? Or no, I'm sorry, it's requesting thirty-two point seven. We did do that, I'm sorry. Let me move forward. So impervious, no variance request, correct?
The lot impervious for the bishop's lot is fifty-one point six percent, where fifty is the max.
All right, so that would be a variance-
The variance request on the bishop's lot. And that's basically due to the proposal to put the, he has a proposed pool in the back, a swimming pool in the rear yard. He's removing the small garage, putting a larger garage to get two vehicles within the garage. And that slightly larger garage along with the pool, which is in a closed structure over the top of the pool, puts them slightly over the fifty percent.
Okay. Floor area ratio, how did you design the plot plan in conjunction with Mary Hearn for floor area ratio?
Well, we have no variances for floor area ratio. We took the lot area, multiplied it by the maximum allowable in the zone, which is seventy-five percent, and designed the floor plan and the second floor and the half floor above it to be seventy-five percent floor area ratio.
Okay.
Within that building is also a one-car garage. So there is outdoor parking for additional, but there is a one-car garage built into each of the new proposed three dwellings.
All right, so-
Floor area ratio.
So in the new dwelling, there'll be a one-car in the building and a two-car behind each building, providing three spots for each building, correct?
Except for the third lot, which actually has three outdoor spaces, four outdoor spaces. So the lot further still on the alley has one garage space and four outdoor spaces.
And what is required for a four-bedroom or more, single-family home in this zone?
Three spaces is required for a four-bedroom or more home.
So the applicant is requesting no parking variance. Is that correct?
That's correct. No parking variances and no driveways on Seventh either.
All right. I want to dial back to studies that perhaps yourself, myself, Ms. Hearn, we looked at the parking ordinance in Belmar regarding spaces per church and ancillary structures. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm just going to call back the bishop for one moment, just to ask him a foundation question. Bishop John, my understanding is the church had capacity of two hundred parishioners, is that correct?
Correct.
And that would be provided by seats, that you would have individual seats for three hundred parishioners? Wow, sorry, two hundred parishioners?
Correct.
All right. So, Mr. DeFalco, I'm going to represent to you that the ordinance, and I'm looking for the actual ordinance, talks about one parking spot per three seats for three parishioners. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. My good assistant is helping me over here. If we did the basic math, that's sixty-six point six parking spots required for the church where the church currently offers none. Is that correct?
That's correct. There are no onsite parking spaces.
Equally, we looked at elementary schools or associated schools. And Bishop John, you would routinely have approximately ten teachers and employees in the accessory elementary school when functioning. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
And the code, Mr. DeFalco, would be one point five per classroom or one per teacher. So there's many rooms, classrooms in that structure. We took it to look at per teacher. That would be another ten spots, correct?
Correct.
And how many exist to the best of your knowledge regarding the elementary school at this time?
There are no onsite spaces.
So we are reducing a parking deficiency by approximately seventy-six spots at that location. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You're also familiar that when there are more requirements, I think more than fifty parking spots, there's to be an ancillary parking lot on premises for a church and/or ancillary building. Is that correct?
That's also correct, yes.
And there is no parking lot at this location, correct?
Correct. There is no parking lot onsite at this location.
I want to also just go over the place of worship. And this is probably as large as anything. I think I maybe got a little emotional with the bishop and I wasn't thinking as clearly as I should. The place of worship in this zone is often discussed as a conditional use. Is that not correct?
Right, chapter forty-six point three, conditional use in the zone, provided it adheres to a list of requirements.
Right, so that the board is clear, the public is clear, this is a non-conforming pre-existing use, correct?
Correct.
Because if it was attempted to be built in this day, what is your position on how the place of worship ordinance would be impacted? And would they be able to do what they're doing now or would they need to come to good counsel like myself or many others out there that appear before this board?
Yeah, the church would, if it wanted to build that today, we'd need to go to the zoning board because it's a conditional use, which the planning can grant if the conditions are met. There are nine or ten conditions and only two of them could be met by the church in its present condition. Eight of them would be at variance to the standard and would require zoning board approval, such as, the minimum lot size is twenty-five thousand square feet. We have twenty-two five. The front yard setback to the church is fifty feet. We have sixteen feet on Seventh and about twelve feet on D Street. Side yard setback is twenty feet required and we have three point eight feet to the side of the building. The rear yard is thirty feet. We have twenty feet. Another standard is no accessory building closer than fifteen feet, so the garage would be considered an accessory building. And we have two point nine feet from the garage. It would meet the height requirement and it would meet the lot with requirement of one hundred and fifty feet. But lot coverage is limited to fifty percent and the building is already seventy-four percent. And building coverage is limited to thirty percent and the buildings are fifty-eight point six percent. And probably the biggest one is onsite parking is required. There's no room for any onsite parking and you just explained we need seven, we need six parking spaces. So the, quite a few, if not the majority of the standards would not be met in today's day and age.
From a zoning perspective and a master plan perspective, is it not true that the applicants are eliminating this pre-existing eight non-conformities to move to a far less dense, conforming, single-family application?
That is, that is true. That's the major impact is the reduction of what's there today, the large coverage and impervious in building and a lot less building and coverage, a lot more green space, a lot more air and open space, a lot less runoff, a lot less traffic, a lot less parking requirements. So it's a, from a planning point of view, it has a lot of positive benefits. It fits into the wood characteristic of lot sizes as well as what's there today.
And ultimately, is it a reduction of a non-conforming use that would no longer exist in the community, albeit it was a great neighbor?
That is true.
You have photographs, I believe, that we have submitted. Could you briefly take the board through the photographs and explain what is depicted in the photographs?
All right, I'm going to ask you to tell me what the number is and what it looks like and I'll tell you about the photographs because I can't get the, I can't get that up on the-
We have a couple of aerials. The photographs have been marked A five and thereafter. So A five and A six and A seven are aerials of above. Can you take a look at these exhibits and tell me, do these aerials adequately depict what appears to be from above the area- the area that you've been testifying uh there on?
Yes, A five is.
Excuse me if I could. Excuse me to the chair. Does, do the planning board members have these photographs before them?
Yes. Yes, they were.
They can click up, A five.
I I I don't know, okay, alright.
Yeah.
I just wanted to check.
Now they receive them.
Thank you.
Yeah, A A five is an aerial photo looking pretty much straight down at the site from above, it shows, clearly it shows the large roof area of our corner lot, unmistakably large. Uh that in itself, you get the sense as to that is not fitting into the residential neighborhood from the, just the sheer magnitude of that building. A six and seven are birds are, they call panorama views at a slight lower altitude at a different angle, which shows a three-D view of the homes on both sides of the street adjacent to the church. And you can see the scale of the homes is in keeping what what we're proposing as far as the scale of our homes. So we're not building mega mansions here. We're building homes that fit the care of what's there today in the neighborhood. Uh very similar in size to uh the bishop's home and the homes to the west and to the north of us.
Okay, thank you. Uh taking you briefly through exhibits A eight and A nine and A ten, they show uh different views of both the church, the school and the uh rectory, do you see those as well? And actually, eleven as well.
Yes.
Do those pictures reasonably depict uh the area that you've been testifying upon?
Yes, they do. And they also show that there's a view looking from Seventh south down D, down D Street. And it shows the side of the church building closest to D at the corner of, the right corner of the photograph. And beyond that, you can see the bishop's front porch. And then south of that, you also see neighboring homes which protrude further or actually closer to the street line, to the curb line. And that is in line with what we're proposing for the setback of our corner lot from D. We're we're lining up with the existing view of the homes that are between Seventh and Eighth along our side of D.
Okay, and that is the basis of the uh ten-foot side yard for second, I'm sorry, the basis of the ten-foot second front yard setback on D, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh A twelve depicts the three uh homes directly across the street from um the church and the schools, is that correct?
Correct, the two homes to the west are story dwellings, or two and a half story, and the corner lot is a single-story or one and a half story dwelling. Depends on which way you look at it. Uh that corner home is on the smaller lot, we talked about eighty-two and a half feet deep, five fifty feet wide.
Okay, uh I'd like to uh take, you had uh prepared uh a few, a couple of reports for the board, you prepared a stormwater management report, a traffic report, and environmental impact report, albeit they are um succinct, but you chose to issue them as opposed to requesting waivers, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Alright, so if you take us through each one of them, it would be appreciated.
Alright, so first we'll do the stormwater management report. It is, the report describes the site area, the block and lot number, the seventy-four percent impervious coverage that I spoke about before. The proposed impervious coverage which shows a reduction of about nineteen percent in area. When you reduce the impervious coverage, you reduce the runoff. The calculation is pretty straightforward. For this small site, we use rational method, it takes the area of the times the rainfall intensity, times a coefficient of cover, basically. It's it's a linear equation, if you reduce one of the numbers but hold the other two the same, the result is is. So the rain doesn't change, the area doesn't change, the only factor that changes is the cover number. As we reduce the cover number, we reduce the runoff number. And there's a calculation on the the third page, which shows those reductions in peak rates of runoff.
But where do you, where do you have in your site plan, where are you, how are you taking water off the site if you are?
Alright, so yeah, we're gonna get to that one second, so so the the rate of runoff is reduced. And because the site has a reduction in the runoff, the recharge requirement is not required, there's no requirement to recharge any water. And because we have less than an acre of disturbance, and less than a quarter acre of new blacktop or impervious, we have no requirement to comply with water quality standards. I know you mentioned the borough's new ordinance coming up, but I believe we would still not be, that still wouldn't be triggered by this application, the one coming up in twenty twenty-one. Uh what's proposed for drainage is there's a a proposed drain behind the bishop's proposed new swimming pool. Presently, the water from that part of the property flows off the site onto the neighboring lot number two and block seventy-four. And because we're seeking in impervious cover variance, we thought it was important to not let that increased runoff continue to go to lot number two, but to pick it up and to discharge it into the borough storm sewer system. So what we propose is put a catch basin at the back of his property, grade the property properly, so the water enters that basin, and then pipe it from the back of the bishop's lot out to the corner of Seventh and D, where there is an existing borough storm sewer, which is connected to the piping which leads to Silver Lake. We got the review letter from Jerry, and one of the comments in Jerry's letter on the thing was about maintenance. And when we put this together, we weren't focused on the maintenance aspect of it, more of the actual getting the water out of the area question. We discussed with the client and with Mr. Shipers was, we're going to revise that drain plan slightly and have the bishop's water in its own pipe out to, it's gonna go out to D, and then from D, it'll hit the same inlet at the corner. Won't cross the other three lots' property, so the bishop's water will be in the bishop's pipe maintained by the bishop. Lot one oh one will have its own water connected to its own pipes out to the inlet at the corner. And then for the other two lots, we're gonna construct a new storm sewer inlet on the curb line of Seventh at the common line of the second and third lot. And each of those lots will also have its own piping, take its own water into the back of that inlet without crossing another property owner's land, eliminating the need for an easement or agreement for maintenance. So everybody's piping will be independently controlled by the homeowner and not require a sharing of any maintenance responsibilities. But in essence, all the roof drains are gonna connect to the borough's system. And that will also help decrease the runoff that runs down the common alleyway and eliminate the actual surface runoff that reaches the gutter line of D by placing this water in the pipe underground into the borough's system. That's the stormwater aspect of it. The conclusion is that because we have less runoff and we are piping, that there are no detrimental impacts to the borough relative to stormwater. We'll have more infiltration, less volume of runoff, and the stormwater piping will be a benefit. Move on to the next area, which was traffic. We talked briefly about parking. That's the major, the major impact is that the site now has zero parking and relies on the on-street parking to service it. Our proposal with the rear alleyway will allow us to have onsite parking to meet the code of at least three spaces per dwelling. I think on the bishop's lot, he's got enough depth for maybe five or even more spaces on his lot. And by not having driveways on D, we will pre-up that on-street parking will be available for both the guests and residents and visitors um and for the neighborhood in general. Our onsite parking meets the meets the code, and whatever's in the street will be in addition to that. Our traffic demand is a lot less than the church traffic demand. So from a traffic point of view, we have less traffic on this use, and we have adequate parking, which the present use does not have. There's also a side triangle located at the corner of D and Seventh. The ordinance requires a twenty-foot triangular area in our property, basically taking off a slice of our property. When we looked at the ASHTO requirements, which is what the state standards go by to determine dimensional requirements for side triangles, we find that the side triangle is actually falling within the borough's right-of-way. There's no encroachment on the corner of the lot of, at the corner of Seventh and D. And that area is, the sidewalk area is the graded right-of-way area that's already existing. So there's no need for an onsite easement, because the easement actually would fall within the borough's right-of-way, the side triangle. So we have adequate onsite parking. It's a two-way alleyway that we're proposing eighteen feet wide, which is adequate for the cars to enter and leave. We have backup room, and we have plenty of parking. And the grades are such that it's a safe movement in and out of the driveway on D Street. The last section of this report is called the environmental impact report. Again, while it's brief, it talks about the fact that there are no threatened or endangered species or steep slopes or anything that would be typically uh studied from an environmental point of view relative to the neighborhood. Uh the site has the building on seventy-four percent, rather, impervious on seventy-four percent of it. Taking that away will will expose some of the uh the soil for infiltration to provide more green space for recharge. We are in a flood zone, the AE-ten zone. The ground elevations on the property vary from eight and a half to nine feet every take. Uh we're elevating the center of the site, have all the first floors several feet above the AE-ten elevation. Uh the bishop's house is above the AE-ten elevation. So we will comply with the flood regulations relative to these structures. And we have, you know, new buildings we're putting in, brand-new buildings, so while the church may have upgraded their their systems inside for heating and air conditioning, we're gonna have state-of-the-art heating and air conditioning systems, which will, I'm guessing, produce less emissions from three homes than that large building did. So we're gonna be having a little bit cleaner air, gonna have uh more green space, we're gonna have less traffic, less runoff. And the, in in essence, we have a a greener project than what's there today. That's basically the essence of these three topics, traffic, stormwater, environmental.
I'm going to next take you to what's been marked PV one, which is the engineering report by um Alaskan Incorporated, issued by the uh Borough Engineer. Uh you have a copy of that, and I believe that was also signed off by Christine Bell, the board planner.
Planning, yes, I have the Leonard Hungman.
Alright, could you uh go through that report, hit on, hit on the points
I will.
that are requested for clarification or explanation?
Yes, alright, so let's start page one and two. Um, let me get to.
Variances start on page two, if that's.
Right, variance is on two. Alright, so so we did the actual chart already, we think we went through the chart, I can go through that again, but I think we did the chart. Well, Mr. Shiper is actually.
Act through the chart unless, uh Mr. Chairman, you you'd like a reiteration, but I think you have it both on paper and you heard also through the presentation, I believe.
No, I think that was sufficiently covered, so you can move beyond the the chart.
Let me move that, right, so then, beyond the chart on page four is the actual written words that the chart kinda describes, but now it's in writing in a sentence format. So I think if we look to page four and five and the top of six, it's it's the written language which the chart described graphically. The first comment I'd like to get to is on page six of nine, which is item J. The maximum building coverage committed in the, for our seventy-five zone is twenty-five percent of the lot area for lots seven thousand to seventy-four ninety-nine. The applicant is proposing a building coverage of thirty-one point nine for lot one oh four, that's the bishop's lot. Uh that, that is a a number that came off of the final flat, which was in error. My map is correct, the application that Mrs. Shiper prepared shows thirty-nine point three, and that's the number that we're seeking tonight.
Thirty-nine point three, Rich?
Thirty-nine point three percent is on lot one oh four, the bishop's lot.
Okay.
The next, C, swimming pool under number one, the applicant is proposing uh a setback from the garage of three feet, and a variance is required. I spoke to Jerry about this, I think that because we have a pool inside of a structure, my interpretation would be that the pool setbacks would not apply if the pool is in a building. The pool is not in a building, I would think the setback requirement of ten feet to a building would would apply. But since we have a pool inside a building, I believe just the ancillary building setbacks need to be maintained. And we do have performance with the accessory building setbacks to the property line, but within that building is a pool.
Yeah, if if I could just throw it, um there were no architectural plans provided, so we did not know uh the extent of that structure. Rich did explain that to me today. Uh and.
Let me just.
So the, yeah, so the board understands.
Right.
It's a two-car garage, but it's a tandem parking. And then the smaller uh depth part of the building is where, is gonna be where there could be a retractable roof or something over the building, over the pool. So if the pool's part of the garage building, then they do not need a variance for the separation between the pool and the garage. But we would like to see maybe some architecturals or something to see what it looks like.
Yeah, I I I think for the board's benefit, it may be worth explaining a little more about that, but Jerry, to your comment, if that pool cover structure, wherever that might be, is attached to the garage, then Mr. DeFalc's argument is correct.
Yes.
Okay. So Mr. DeFalc or Mr. Shipers, if you could explain to the board, because we don't see anything other than some dotted lines around the pool, if you could explain that structure, it would help. it would help the board as well as certainly the, the other members sitting in on the meeting understand what's being proposed.
Yes, if, if you look at sheet two of three, I'm looking at of Mr. DeFalco's three-page plans, you will see the garage is 14 by 40. There is a pool that is 14 by 16. Mr. DeFalco has scribed the other three sides of the pool struct, of the pool, I'll call it housing or, or extension, that is going to be a solid structure that is combined with the garage, where it's really one accessory building. It's a two-car slash enclosed swimming pool structure so that the bishop can use the pool not only in the summer times, but in winter times as well. Our position is we attempt to maintain the three-foot setback, both on the rear and the southerly side. There may be some opening mechanisms in the roof. It may look almost something like a carazza retractable roof that opens and closes, where it may very well be a solid roof along with the solid roof of the garage. The bishop's getting estimates from both Mr. Kinsel and pool installers and his final decisions will be made. But the, the request for approval is to allow him, assuming his funds are there, to build the structure in that fashion.
Thank you.
We, we have, we have no objection that phrasing a favorable resolution that the, that either my LLC and/or the bishop give the property, the, the concept of this subdivision has a few moving parts to it. In the event my LLC closes, it, it's still, the, the church still has an interest in its property and its deed then has to come back, or by map, but deed has to come back to the church. So and I, I'll ask the bishop, I don't think there's any objection that architecturals will be submitted to the engineer. We will abide by any recommendation of the engineer if in fact it creates a variance condition. It's not necessarily our desire to come back, but if need be, we might, we would do that on behalf of the bishop. But I think if you grant that variance, that to the extent he, well, I don't think it's a variance. If we determine it's not a variance, we grant he can do it. That's what it's going to be. And the bishop's right next to me, and I know this is very dear to his heart. I'll, I don't want to just put words in his mouth. So bishop, could you indicate what type of structure, assuming funds line up? As we say, that the heavens help us here a little bit, what do you intend to instruct?
Just a very simple structure, blended with the garage, built off of the garage.
You intended to be three-sided with a roof on, correct? Do you intend to heat it?
Yeah, possibly, right.
Okay. No, no bathroom facility, correct? There you have it, Mr. Chairman.
So is it fair to say, Mr. Schipers, that, that, you know, you're willing to, to note for the record and perhaps a condition of the application that this, this garage attachment, this pool structure will be attached to the garage regardless of whether it's retractable roof or, or, you know, a hard structure, I'll call it, but that it'll be attached, so therefore it can be considered and will be considered part of the accessory structure? And in fact, no other variances will be required of that structure? Is that...
Absolutely, that is our request.
Okay, thank you.
And certainly comply with the accessory height restrictions.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeFalco, I, I may have deflected the ball there a little bit. I'm just going to have to get back to...
I'll continue, yes. I'm still on page six. I'm still on page six. We're going to go to D. Request is that the 18-foot driveway needs a variance. That's the shared driveway for the three residences. So we're proposing 18 feet wide, which is the minimum width for a two-way operation according to RSIS. The Borough Ordinance has a 10-foot maximum driveway, single driveway width. And since we have two-way driveway, we're requesting the waiver for the 18 feet. It will provide safe ingress and egress, two-way movement from D Street. That is a variance that we do require. Under E, we provide a breakdown of the calculations of things I talked about, what the percentages and how they were, how they were derived. We're asking for a waiver from landscaping and lighting. For landscaping, each of the homeowners will be providing their own landscape treatment to the homes. Foundation plantings. There is an existing tree along D in front of the westerly most lot, which will be retained. And other than that, I believe that we could add one or two street trees, but they are getting closer to the corner. So for visibility purposes, I would think that we could work with the engineer in the field and see how many trees we could plant along the curb line, but won't jeopardize any sightlines on the corner. There are none there today.
Mr. DeFalco, I, I think you may want to make a comment. You said there was a tree on D. I think you meant to say it's on Seventh, the existing street tree, correct? There's nothing on...
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
On sideways here, yes, Seventh Avenue, the westerly most lot, does have a tree in front of it. Other than that, on Seventh, there is nothing. And we would propose to meet with the town engineer to see whether additional trees would be feasible, and we would agree to put the man at D big. With, with regard to lighting, since there's no parking lots per se, it's single-family. We don't believe lighting is needed on, on the actual property. We don't want there to be lights on, as it was a parking lot. So there are some streetlights in the neighborhood, and other than that, we don't propose any lighting on the site. Each home will have our, obviously, outdoor lights and push lights and lights of that nature, but nothing specific relative to a lighting plan for roadway or parking. On page number seven, we, under four, we did testimony on stormwater traffic environmental under D relative to the flood zone issues. We will comply with one, two, three. And number four is really a function of the architect plan, the construction official, and we will comply with whatever the construction official says relative to a basement. We would propose that the, the sill of the lowest window be one foot above the flood elevation to prohibit any floodwater from entering the structure. Under E, at the bottom of the page, I verbally explained how we're going to eliminate the need for a drainage easement by having each home connect directly into the borough's storm drain system, which carries to comment F on page eight, which would not be required. We will provide an inlet detail. For G, we're thinking of the Milo Plast version. It's made by ADS, it's a pre-manufactured plastic yard inlet. The inlet out the street will be the standard DOT style cast iron grate with basement foundation. The number of bedrooms, we're thinking three to four bedrooms per unit, that's comment H. The type of basement, crawl space or slab-on-grate will be a function of what is allowed by code. We think we can get basements if we meet the right elevation criteria. And as to appearance, if Mary is around, if not, these are going to look like beautiful Mary Hearn dwellings. As far as I, shared driveway, what we propose is that the owner of the corner lot will care of the driveway on his lot. The middle lot will take care of the middle portion of the driveway and the end lot will take care of the, the westerly portion of the driveway. But each of the owners will maintain their portion of the driveway. The individual, the testimony regarding as to why individual access is not proposed, we briefly talked about that, but we didn't want to see cars from Seventh Avenue. We didn't want driveways in the front yards. And we didn't want to break up the available parking on the street with three curb cuts, and that's why we did not do individual accesses. We've done this type of an approach before in the borough and it seemed to work pretty well. So we thought it would work here as well. J, we agreed to J. K, and we'll add a note on the block plan about replacement of curves and sidewall. Whatever is in need of repair will be re... And M will get a copy with a stamp on and seal of the survey. And conditions of approval, taxes, other permits, and the guarantee will be provided as required. That's the letter, basically.
All right, Rich, I'm going to ask you, put your planning hat back on, I'm just about complete with my rec. From a planning perspective, looking at it from both a C1 and a C2 variance hardship, trying to keep the existing lot on D as C1, creating three similar lots on Seventh, as well as C2 from what currently exists and all of its what are phrase negatives that you so aptly describe, do you have a conclusion or opinion from a planner's perspective as to whether the proposed plan is a better alternative and more conformity with the master plan? You may have answered it before, but I'm just asking it as a summary.
Yeah, I'll summarize again. So I believe the purposes of the municipal land use law 4055D2 are advanced by, by this project under, so paragraph C, to provide adequate light, air, and open space. I believe that the less building and less impervious coverage will provide for more air, light, and open space on this property, the 22,000 square feet. I believe under paragraph G provides sufficient space and corporate locations for a variety of residential uses according to their respective environmental requirements to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. So I believe that the... The, hold on one second. Let me back that up. Comment E, to promote establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, these new regions, and preservation of the environment. We are maintaining the neighborhood characteristics by putting equally-sized dwellings on comparably wide lots of 50 feet, which will fit into the neighborhood scene and not disrupt the neighborhood. And finally, under I, to promote a desirably visual environment, desirable visual environment by taking down the large structure, albeit a church and a school which has its visual historic value, I believe. Taking that building away from the neighborhood's close side setbacks and large size will create a better visual environment for the residential structures that are on Seventh and D by the elimination of the large building. So those three purposes of the act, I believe, are advanced, and I believe the benefits of deporting from those standards by the plan that proposed outweigh any detriment to the public good. We're going to have less runoff, less traffic, less buildings. It will meet the intent of what I think is a, is a positive plan. And I believe the variance can be granted without causing substantial detriment to the public good, and the granting of the variance will not substantially impair the intent or purpose of the zoning plan ordinance. We realize that variance is required, but we believe that the variances required are not significant and not substantial detriment to the borough in that neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. DeFalco. No further testimony from Mr. DeFalco from my perspective.
Okay. Any other, are you bringing Mary or Dave to testify?
I'm going to bring Dave up very briefly. Bishop, if you could yield to Mr. Kinsel. Mr. Kinsel, you've been previously sworn for the record, as we establish records, Dave, in this, these type of hearings, notwithstanding that the board may be familiar with you, can you give a brief summary or synopsis who you are, what you do, what company, your geographical area that you work, amount of homes you've perhaps built in the vicinity of, of Belmar?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Dave Kinsel, owner of North End Builders of Belmar. I live at 112 Third Ave in Belmar. I've been working in Belmar probably the last 30 years or so. We probably have about 35 to 40 homes in Belmar that we've built. We've done subdivisions at the Barclay, subdivision at 201 First Ave, a bunch of other projects in town and multiple, multiple single-family homes. I'm sure most of you have seen some of the work we do. You know, whenever we work, we always take the neighbors into consideration, the quietness. We try to be conforming in all of our construction projects, timelines, not starting before eight, not working after six. And I'm just happy that, you know, Bishop John and Mr. Schipper brought me on this project. I think it's a great project. We have inquiries, people who are registered to live in Belmar, and this is just another example of why this project should go through.
Mr. Kinsel, briefly, you were involved almost from, from day one, wherein when the request for proposals were going out by the Methodist Council, I came to you first to discuss the feasibility and your desire to participate under certain, you know, confidential conditions to a degree, but that you were willing to participate in this process to assure the bishop that he would get a, a type of product and look that he desired before he would even choose a developer. Is that correct?
That's correct.
After that, we sat down at length with yourself, myself, Miss Earn, Bishop John, talked about many different things, but we came to this potential plan that seemed to meet the desires, feasibility, and abilities of all people involved. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Also, part of this, as you and I have discussed over the years as projects go, we wanted to protect that we were going to do these as a series of three or with the Mary Hearn design and the North End Builders quality efficiency and a great product. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I don't have any other questions of David, other than if you want to inquire to him, he's my, literally my material specialist. I'm not conversant on types of siding, window packages, typical roofing that he, he typically does, but I wanted to bring him, make him available for any inquiries as to what the intent is of both my LLC and the church and the building behind, which Mr. Kinsel's going to be constructing and doing the labor work and contracting for the bishop's property as well.
Thank you, Mr. Schipers, and, and we'll certainly want to bring Mr. Kinsel back into the discussion, should we have questions from either the board or from the public. So at this point, thank you, Dave, for that overview. And Mr. Schipers, thank you for the question. The witnesses.
Is Mary out there?
April, do we know if Mary, Mary Hearn is in the audience? Mary, if you are, please raise your hand.
Yeah. I do see a Mary, but there's no last name. I'm not sure if it's her.
You know, she's out of town, up in Lake George in a very remote area, and they were concerned about having, you know, internet access that they were trying to do, but maybe that just didn't happen.
At this juncture, that will be our application. I think everyone understands the type of product we're looking for.
Okay. Mr. Kovats, before we open it up to the board for questions, any... Mr. Kovats, before we open it up to the board for questions, any, any questions you have before I roll it to the, the board for questions? We have to take you off mute, mute, Doug. You're still on mute.
I'm mute now. There we go. If I could, just
Yes, please.
Briefly. And Mr. Shiper, I'll toss these out as to whoever is going to cover these. I recognize from what Mr. DeFalcone said that they're not composing a landscaping plan at this point in time because the individual property owners will provide their own landscaping. Can we agree that as a condition of the approval that purchasers of the property will be advised of their obligation to submit a landscaping plan to be approved by the engineer? I, and the only reason I'm putting this out there is I don't want to come away with properties that should otherwise be landscaped if they were coming for their site plan. And then saying, well, there was no condition in the approval, we don't have to do anything.
Not only am I in agreement, but as we age, we get a little wiser. I've come across situations from, from many different projects I've done over the years in Belmar and elsewhere. Mr. Kovats, I'm going to, my intention is going to be is to report the resolution. And any feedbacks that go out have a copy of the resolution attached there too.
Okay, so it would not be an objection that the, that there will be a landscaping plan for each one of the sites at a time when it is appropriate. Well, you and I can work out language. I just don't want you to be surprised by a condition if that's what the board would like to do.
Actually, I join it because I want, I want beautiful scaping and I don't want any contest of what our, does ours are post any closings.
Is there any idea, and again, I leave this to you, Mr. Shipers, to direct it. There appears to be some type of, looks like concrete. Do we know what the material is that's going to be surrounding the pool on the interior of the structure?
I, we initially debated probably semi-pervious favors, but it could be a concrete four. The bishop is still figuring that out, maybe something even softer or more feet friendly.
Is that part of the impervious calculation though, that it was?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hundred percent impervious?
I think Rich included it because he was intending it to be roofed.
Right, the roof, if I can jump in, the roof is the, is solid and that's figured hundred percent impervious.
Good, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Kovats, I'm sorry.
Very good. I noticed that there are any number of areas where there's an indication that there will be a fence. Do we have any idea of what type of fence height?
Yeah, yes. The intention that we have right now is to have a perimeter fence running between Westerly Lot one point oh three to a minimum to the rear of the bishop's property. If he wants it continued, we would continue that fence. We are going to run a, and that's a six-foot high fence in the side on our, next to our property line. We would continue that six-foot fence, a hundred and fifty feet to D Street, to the property line to give the bishop some privacy. We've already discussed plantings, perhaps some vegetation for sound. We may put fences in between the individual homes of Lot one, I'm sorry, one point oh one, one point oh two, one point oh three, and from one oh three to the fence line to the west so that from Seventh Avenue, you're not looking down perimeters inside of the homes into the backyard and to the alleyway. So we may very well do that aesthetically. Didn't want to necessarily, we debated this with Mr. DeFalcone. We didn't want to necessarily make it a condition of the application, but that's an effective intent of how Mary, David, and I would like, and the bishop would like to see it dropped out.
And the materials of the fence, what would be constructed?
We're thinking probably white vinyl. So you can't see through it, similar to what we see many of the new, new homes.
So it would be a solid fence, the six-foot fence?
Correct.
And then, Mr. Shipers, just continuing with that questioning. As you come down the side of the bishop's property, between the bishop's property Lot one point oh four and oh one, oh two, oh three, as it approaches D Street, does that six-foot fence drop down? In other words, do you reduce the height as you get closer to the street so it doesn't become this huge six-foot fence?
Rich about that, and we talked about
Jump in again, yeah. If I can, the fence stops at the front of the bishop's home. So it is not in the front setback area.
And I know, Mr. DeFalcone, your plans today, at least that we've seen in, in exhibit do show a fence going between each of the lots, one oh one, oh two, and oh three. But I think, and I'm trying to figure out where it starts and where it ends. I think that's a four-foot fence, not a six-foot fence, but I'd like to get some clarity
That's correct.
It's being discussed. Is that correct?
Yes, the only six-foot fence was along the west side of Lot one oh three and along the bishop's lot running from the rear to the D. Between the lots, homes are four foot, I, I'm sorry.
Is that PVC as well, the four-foot fence?
Yes, the same color, same material, but only four feet high.
And it wouldn't be solid? It would be like a picket-type fence or something?
That was not determined. I thought it was going to be solid along the side parallel with Seventh to prohibit the view through to any vehicles behind it. As it is along the line, I don't know that would be.
And does it go across the property? In other words, does it have a, you know, not just between them, but does it have, go across at the front of the building? In other words, how does that fence terminate as you approach Seventh?
The fence terminates midway from the front to the back of the building. It's drawn on the map on page two of three. The fence is shown halfway back from the front to the rear. It does not go all the way to the
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Kovats. I'm sorry, I wanted to get some
Excuse me, can I, can I add one more comment to the fence while we're there?
Yeah.
Okay, you show a concrete wall along there. Is the fence intended to be on the concrete wall or next to it?
The fence is meant to be six feet high at the low side of the wall so it affords a six-foot high screen to the neighboring lot, Lot number two.
So the fence will be a Yeah, no, is the fence, is the wall inside the fence, outside the fence, or is the fence on the wall?
The fence is the property line and the wall and then the house. So the fence is low and then the wall comes up. So from the homeowner's side, it looks like a four-foot fence. From the neighbor's side, it looks like a six-foot fence.
I just so the board understands that there's a six-foot high fence, but inside the fence, there's a two-foot high concrete wall. Correct?
On the driveway side.
No, going down the
West, the west side of Lot one oh
The west side of Lot one oh three.
Okay.
But we don't have an eight-foot fence or basically a six-foot fence on top of a two-foot wall. We don't have that.
Okay, and then on, on the parsonage property, that fence would be on, on the parsonage lot, the one point oh four, right?
Correct. Again, at grade level and the wall behind it.
Good.
Got it.
Thank you.
No, thank you for that clarity, Jerry. That's helpful.
I continue.
Please.
On, on lot, on proposed Lot one point zero three, in the rear corner, in the there's an indication that there's a low retaining wall, top of wall, four feet above driveway. I'm assuming that's what that means. Can you provide some discussion with
Inches, four inches above driveway.
Thank you.
That's basically a curb.
Gotcha. All right. Wasn't clear on mine, four foot seemed a little bit high, four inches much better. We don't have any idea of the type of facade materials that are being proposed for the, for the residential structures at this point?
I think I could put Mr. Kinsel on to discuss and the materials that Mr. Kinsel will be happy with, assuming he has enough variation and discourse that with end users, I'm more than happy to make those representations part of the application.
Yeah, I mean, we're not really sure yet. I mean, normally we'd have, you know, vinyl shake or vinyl clapboard. Homeowners want to do, you know, cement siding, like hardy siding. Some of the homeowners may want a natural shake. So, I mean, it's up for discussion with, with the actual homeowners on what they want. You know, they'll be putting the bill for, for their homes, so we kind of offer them, you know, anything that they really want. So it would be in that area, anywhere from, you know, vinyl shake, vinyl siding, hardy clapboard, hardy shake. You know, all of the materials that we would normally use on any of our homes, you know, asphalt, roof shingles, a timber line. You know, a lot of maintenance free stuff, their porches, their sods, evasions are all ASAC board. You know, don't need to be painted, don't, they don't rot. But again, it's still a little bit up in the air on what exactly it's going to be.
And I would ask the board to weigh in on comments on this so that we can provide the, the applicant with, with some direction. I'm, I'm, I may have misspoke. Obviously, you're going to, you know, if you're going to build something along the lines of what you did over at the Barkley property, I don't think anybody's going to have any issue. My concern is that they don't look like cookie cutter, you know, homes all built at the same time. You know, that, that there's going to be a variety, there's going to be differences there. I'm assuming you're going to be the contractor that's going to build them. Just don't want them to look like cookie cutter houses.
Yeah, I mean, if, if anybody looks at our website and all the homes that we build, you know, we try never to make one look the same as the one next to it, you know, colors aren't the same. Roof lines are not the same, you know, they're, you know, cross gables with a front-to-back gables, a lot of dormers. You know, we want this to be a neighborhood, you know, streetscape, not just three little boxes placed in a row.
Very good.
Can I jump in on this one with a question? Is it fair to say, Mr. Shipers, I won't throw Dave at this one, that the architecture plans, architectural plans are not complete for these three homes on Seventh? Is that fair?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and would it be fair to request, and would you be willing to accept the condition of the application that these three homes would have some variations so that they do not appear to be the same home with just different color siding and roofing?
We certainly would. It's our desire.
And I'll let Mr. Kovats, you know, kind of frame out the language with you on that, but just in the interest of protecting the community, if we can at least get, I understand it's too premature to have the architecture, but at least that we can commit to variations that will at least allow the community to feel a little better with what might be proposed.
And not only, it's our desire. We like that commitment. I'd like it in a resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, let me, I think, because I believe that this is going to go back towards your planner, if I, with your permission, Mr. Shipers, to examine briefly on his conclusions from a planning perspective. Mr. DeFalcone, I think the issue here is even for the properties, for the most part, focusing on the corner lots, but for the most part, the issue here is the depth of the lot. Even if you have a fifty-foot across and across the street, I agree that the fifty-foot majority of the lots, and even on this particular block, they run the full depth of a hundred and fifty. Would you agree with that?
A lot of, wait, a lot of
They have the depth of a hundred and fifty. I guess what my point is, trying to net the seven hundred and fifty, it seems, or the seven thousand five hundred. No matter, no matter how you configure this lot, you're probably never going to get a configuration which provides you with a corner lot of nine thousand square feet, correct?
Correct.
Right. But I, and again, I don't want to state the obvious. If you, if you eliminated Lot one oh two and divided the frontage between what at present is one oh one and one oh three, you'd have two conforming lots of seven thousand five hundred square feet. I'm not, I'm not asking you to say that that's a great idea, but you'd agree with me that the numbers on that would work.
The numbers would work. Yes.
And in, and in this instance
Excuse me. That would not work because the corner lot has to be nine thousand square feet.
Nine thousand, right.
So, so for that to be a conforming lot, then the interior lot would not conform. So anyway, you slice it, the corner lot's going to be non-conforming.
Right, and I think that was the premise we made, Jerry, at the very beginning. There was no way we're going to carve this where we're going to get a conforming corner lot. And I agree with that. And just go, and just going through this, then lot, let's assume that the best we're going to get is seven thousand five hundred square foot. If you did that proposal, you would eliminate the minimum lot area for the other two lots. You'd eliminate the minimum frontage variance. I'm looking at Lot one oh one on the chart so that you understand what I'm looking at. I'm looking at PB one. The chart is prepared by our engineer. And that's on page three of nine.
Got it.
We would, for, for proposed Lot one oh one, obviously, we're not going to meet the nine thousand square feet, but we could meet seven thousand five hundred, correct?
You could, yeah.
Minimum frontage, you would no longer need a variance for that because I'm assuming we'd then have seventy-five feet of frontage, correct?
Correct.
We would eliminate, while we'd still have the minimum rear yard setback issue, that, that's going to exist no matter what, correct?
Yes.
But we would eliminate the lot shape diameter, minimum diameter variance, correct?
Correct, which goes along with requests for this front setback.
Because we're going to have, in theory, a bigger lot.
Correct.
So we would, we wouldn't be looking at Lot one oh two because it wouldn't exist, but with regard to Lot one oh three, the interior lot minimum area would be conforming. In a sense, you wouldn't need any variances on that sheet. And on the second sheet, you'd meet the middle, you wouldn't need any variances for maximum building coverage. Correct?
Correct in your calculation.
In the calculator, I, I love your answers. You know where I'm going with this.
Yes.
In terms of the overall design in this area, in your opinion, and now I'm saying in this area, going back to your age one, where we're looking at the tax map.
Yes.
And I'm conceding to you that the R seventy-five zone on Block sixty-four, it's it's and looking at sixty-three, R seventy-five, and R forty, completely different zone, but why wouldn't something like that, that we're discussing at this point in time at this, instead of three lots across, two lots across, you maintain your existing back house? Because that's conforming, that's, that's interior lot, R seventy-five. And, you know, any, any non-conformity except for perhaps except for impervious because we're putting a bigger accessory structure in. Why wouldn't that be consistent with the zone plan?
That would be consistent with the zone plan, but I believe that we didn't talk about Block seventy-four. There's also another hundred-foot lot immediately adjacent to the bishop's house.
I'm sorry, you didn't come through for me.
Sorry, we didn't talk about Block seventy-four lot. Lot twenty-two, which is adjacent to the bishop's lot, is another hundred-foot by fifty-foot lot. So our position is we're split by fifty by one hundred-foot lots at the edge of the R forty zone. And we are a transition between the edge of the zone, the R forty, and the undersized existing lots in all corners and adjacent to the bishop's lot. Across Seventh Avenue, there's also another hundred-foot deep lot, Lot number thirteen. So it's not uncommon for this So it's not uncommon for this established R75 zone to have smaller lots. And the fact that we're against the R40 zone with four homes directly across from the Bishop, I believe that our plan is a nice transition between the R40 and the balance of the R75 zone being the character of the neighborhood as they exist with the three undersized lots immediately adjacent to our property.
If you don't mind for a minute, I noticed, kind of to counter that, the lot on the corner of DN8, 8th Avenue, I think it's around 10,000 square feet. So that is conforming to the requirements of the Zone District. And as Mr. Kovat said earlier, while along 7th, most of the lots do have a 50 foot width, they have the depth that allows them to meet the requirements of the R75 zone. The R40 zone that you're referencing across the street, those zones are smaller. And throughout Belmar, they tend to be right on the lake. So that's a little bit different than the R75 zone that this property is in. And I think Mr. Kovat's suggestion was a good one, especially because, while you provided testimony earlier that you were reducing some of the existing non-conformities, I think in this proposal, you're asking for 16 both variances, which is a substantial amount of variances.
Okay, if I could continue through the chair, and I thank you, Ms. Bell. And I guess, I think from my point of view, this may be a question for the planning board. Versus a total of 1, 2, 3 lots versus 4 lots. How is your plan? And I'm looking more towards the C2 criteria, because I think that's where you're going with this at this point in time. Certainly, you have the hardship with the existing residential structure. But on that residential structure, really, the hardship variance that you really need there is just the height that's pre-existing. You're really conforming. How is your proposal for the three lots fronting on 7th Avenue? A better alternative than, say, 2, using the C2 criteria?
I believe it fits into the neighborhood better. That the two lots would be oversized for the specific corner that we're located on.
You think the 75 feet of frontage would look out of character?
I believe so. The home directly across the street is on an 82 foot deep lot. And I believe it would overweight or outweigh that smaller home on that lot.
And to the other lots on those properties, if you know, and again, I don't, I don't, not trying to set anything up. Do you know whether those lots, let's say the lots across the street on 7th Avenue, whether they are designed with driveway areas that access 7th Avenue and then run the depth of the lots, say like on Lot 19, 18, 17 on Block 64?
17 and 18 have driveways on 7.
Okay.
And those homes are deeper than our proposed home.
They're deeper, but in terms of the view then, when you look at it, you look at the house and you look at a driveway.
Yes, you do.
In the frontage.
Yes.
What would the visual impact of that be compared to simply 75 feet across the front of the other lot? Across the street, would that look consistent or inconsistent in your view?
It would be looking at probably the biggest house on the block as opposed to one similar to size and scope that are existing on both sides.
Sorry, bear with me for a second. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have. You say there's not going to be any additional lighting in the driveway area? And it's going to run?
No streetlight, no streetlights per se. Each home would have a garage light, which would be 18 feet from the edge of the driveway, of the alleyway.
And these houses that you're proposing, or at least the residential structures that you're proposing, in this instance, you're proposing to at least have the ability to develop them with a covered porch on the first floor?
The covered porch is part of the reason for the request for exceeding the building coverage number. We did have an earlier plan which met and covered it covered, but it was a balance between the far and the porch. And we said, let's put the porch, porch is going to look good. So we kept the far at 75%. We added the porches at the represented setback, 12 feet from the right of way line to match the porch look on all the other homes on 7th Avenue.
And the setbacks of the porches are all conforming, correct?
Conforming porches, 8 foot porch, 24 foot wide, yes.
Have you discussed the rerouting, if you will, of the site drainage?
Yes, each lot will have an individually owned and maintained drain connection to the borough system.
And there's a notation that there's underground electrical service. There'll be separate service for each lot, or we'll be running through the driveway easement area?
That's correct.
I ask two questions. There's separate service for each lot?
Yes.
Are they going to be running through the driveway area to connect?
The ultimate location, I would assume, would be the driveway. But I wouldn't second guess JCP and L. They may come off 7th and be underground.
All right.
But they will be underground.
To the extent possible, you're trying to put as many services underground for each one of these homes?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kovats. Appreciate it. At this point, I'll go to my professionals. Christine, I'm not sure if there's anything you wanted to add, or Jerry, before we open it to board comments or questions.
I have, I have two issues real quick. How do you guys intend to remove garbage and recycling? What's the plan there?
The proposal for garbage would be to bring it out to either 7th or D Street on collection day, but not onsite. It would be brought to the curb line.
So a little concerned with Lot 103. Would they then have to stack their cans down on D Street with the other two? It just seems like it could be a problem.
It's a lot closer if they go out the front door to the sidewalk at 7th rather than going all the way down the alley and bringing it all the way back. So I'd say from a convenience point of view, who is me, I'd go out to 7th. I wouldn't go all the way down to D with my can.
But there's no walkway or anything to roll a can down?
There'll be a gate and there'll be a side yard. And they can always carry it too, not to roll it, well, they get wheels on it. But they can put some kind of sidewalk. That's all subject to the actual plot plan. We can show a sidewalk from the side yard to the front sidewalk.
Right, but the sidewalk's not included in your impervious coverage calculation. And that's why I'm bringing it up.
Right. We also, our impervious coverage used 100% for a coverage number. And by borough ordinance, we're allowed to go to 50% on pavers. We did not take the credit, just so you know. The calculation assumes 100% impervious sidewalk. So if we opt to go pavers, we will have a lot of leeway and wiggle room to make that number work as far as impervious.
Okay, the two parking spaces on Lot 1.03 that are in the back corner, are they needed or can that be turned to grass?
We just felt that more parking in Belmar is always better parking.
Five parking spaces is a lot. I think the board should just consider, the more grass you can get, the better, in my opinion. So just asking to consider, maybe you leave one and get rid of one. Just a consideration. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jerry. And certainly, I would ask the board to comment on Jerry's comments about those two parking spots as we roll around with questions. Christine, anything?
I think kind of just to reiterate or further what Doug was saying, good planning practice usually does not recommend the creation of non-conforming lots. And even if there might be some non-conforming lots, you know, adjacent or near this property, typically, you would look to create a conforming lot to the borough's standards. I think Mr. Kovacs realized and recommended kind of some of the particularities of the site in suggesting if they did a three lot subdivision instead of four, all lots would meet, could meet the minimum area for an interior lot and only needing one lot area variance then for the corner lot, which may not, which would not meet the 9,000 square feet required. It would probably also reduce the number of other variances needed because they are requesting quite a few variances for each of the proposed lots right now. Really all.
All right. Thank you, Christine. All right. At this point, I'll open it up to board questions for our professionals. If you have a question, I'll ask the board members to unmute your phone and we'll roll around the table and answer your questions. Go ahead, Mr. Forte.
Hi, Mr. DeFalco. When you referred to the Lots 17, 18, and this is something that Doug alluded to too, and I picked that up. You mentioned that there was a 50 foot wide frontage. But you neglected to mention that that lot is 150 foot deep, which conforms to R75. You didn't mention that, so it's, you know, just trying to keep it straight here. Also, when I look at this map, this tax zoning map, even though you can pick out one or two properties that don't have the 150 area for the R75, basically, when you look at this map, they're all pretty much forming. So that's another comment I want to make. Now, how many variances did you have? Because I counted 17. Is that what you counted? I counted 17 on this.
I think Christine said.
You asked me for it, my question.
I have to count them up individually myself.
Yeah, I counted 17. What is the land hardship? This, because all this is about land use. What is the land hardship? There is a C1 application. What is the land hardship here?
The C1 portion is the Bishop's lot, which is already 50 feet wide and it has a garage in the back. So his lot, he didn't want to reduce the size of his lot to make the other lots larger. So we wanted the Bishop's lot to be, his house already has the side yard variance to the north. He's only, I think, 3.7 feet from the southerly line of our proposed lots, 101.
How does it apply to the three proposed lots in the front? The three lots on the front on 7th Avenue? Does C1 apply?
If his lots were smaller, those lots would be larger. So we don't want to make his lots smaller.
How does, what you're proposing, how does the, in terms of, let's see, I want to get this straight for you. How, according to the master plan, how is your proposal with four homes instead of three, which could be accomplished by not having three on 7th Avenue but having two, how does your plan comply or comport to the master plan in terms of a C2 variance? In other words, how does it improve the character or the implementation of the master plan of Belmar? Could you tell me that?
Well, I think there's no substantial impairment, and that's the point. It's not substantial impairment. We have existing lots across the street. You say there aren't that many, but I'm looking at the map now, counting. On the other side of 7th, there's six lots directly across from 7th. Six lots that are substandard. It's not one, it's not two. There's six lots. There's one directly adjacent to the Bishop's lot, and that's the seventh lot.
That's an exception though, what you mentioned, because I have a lot in front of me too. And when I look at that going all the way down to East Street and both sides, they all seem to be 70, you know, 7,500 square foot lots. Would you agree to that?
There's a lot that are 7,500, but there's a substantial amount right at the corner that are not. And we're on the corner. And it's our opinion that it's a transition between that and the balance of the site. And that we're not going to create substantial detriment to the zone plan.
My only comment.
The borough has an R40 zone next to the R75 zone. What's the rationale for that? Same thing. You've got high density next to lower density. And we're in the middle, we're at 5,000 square feet. And the Bishop's lot is 7,500, not requiring a variance on lot size. So I believe we have a transition from the corner where the four lots across the street are substandard. We increase it slightly, and then the Bishop's lot is back to the standard size again. And we're treating it as that.
Does the Belmar master plan allow for transition zones?
No, but I think good planning does.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted, I see you have yours off, and then I'll jump over to you, Tom Burke. I saw you had one. So Ted, if you have a question, I want to hold comments to the end, so please keep it to questions at this point. Thank you.
If I, to the chair, if I could, on one of Mr. Forte's parts, because I...
Get into it, Ted, please. Thank you.
I just want to make sure that all the law that were clear, because Mr. Forte said, you know, how does C1 hardship variance application? And I don't fault our engineer that they didn't put all of the sections of C1 in there. But there is an additional C1 criteria for hardship that specifically says, and this is C1C. It's referencing hardship by reason of extraordinary and exceptional situation uniquely affecting a specific piece of property. And I'm focusing now on 104, the existing structure. The structures lawfully existing thereon, the strict application of any regulation to Article 8 would result in a particular and exceptional practical difficulties to or exceptional undue hardship upon the developer. A lot of legally gobbledygook, but basically it narrows down to, I believe their planner and our planner to explain this further. Basically, to the extent that there exists lawfully, if you will, that residential structure, that can create an issue for hardship under C1, which was what I was discussing before with Mr. DeFalco, that largely that lot does conform for R75. See how that hardship comes into play about not getting into the depth of the other three lots? That property exists lawfully there. That can be a C1 hardship. To your point, Mr. Forte, where you said, well, that may not play into C1, I may tend to agree with you, except perhaps as to the depth. Probably, and again, I'm not advocating for the planner or for this application, but I think probably the three lots across the front have to meet the C2 criteria. But it's tempered, it's tempered with that existing structure that already exists there lawfully on the site. So there's a balance there.
Thank you for that clarification, Doug. Ted, please.
Yeah, so what I'm looking at this is some of these lots that I see going on the neighborhoods, the side lots sometimes get large stones put on them. And even in the back area next to the driveways, can we make a stipulation that these areas have to be grass? And especially like in the side lots, the rear lot and the front lot, and then flower beds and stuff along the front of the house?
So I think we can certainly, we talked about a condition of landscaping and submitting a landscaping plan for approval. Certainly, we can stipulate that there'll be grass areas where shown as pervious or plant materials so that we can avoid... Although, you know, you want the ability for a homeowner to put some stone in foundation plant beds or something, you know, kind of a aesthetic touch. You don't want the entire front or rear grass area or interpreted to be grass area to be, you know, river stone or something that doesn't necessarily match the community or the area. Is that, is that fair?
That's, that's fair. How many square feet are the homes proposed? They look like they're going to be around 2,500 square feet.
I believe the homes are probably going to range somewhere between 3,000 and 3,500 square feet, two and a half square.
And how many bedrooms are you planning on?
The standard home that, for that size that Mr. Kinsel and Ms. Earn generally designed, we're anticipating three to four bedrooms.
Okay. And then Jerry, how many bedrooms, how many parking spots do we need per bedroom? Mr. Freida?
Yeah, I'm here. They do comply with the bedroom count as, with the spots that they show.
I think-
They need to have, they need to have four altogether, two four parking, four onsite spots.
They have three.
No, I think it's-
I'm sorry.
Let's be clear. It's four or more bedrooms. You need to have three parking spaces.
Which they show, correct.
Okay, I guess the, for the, for the three new lots, I see the impervious coverage is going to be lesser, is going to be less. However, the stormwater will still be going into the street and eventually into Silver Lake in a flood zone. I feel it's our goal to greatly reduce this and correct these past practices. Would you consider pervious pavers and a drywall system to retain the water on the property?
The pervious pavers are already being suggested. We have no problem with pervious pavers. I defer to Mr. DeFalco. I thought he adequately designed the stormwater system, but candidly, I will accept what both Mr. DeFalco and Mr. Freida would conclude would be an adequate drainage system.
Well, we do have, we have pavers, but I mentioned that we didn't calculate it as the credit that the borough gives us. So we calculated 100% impervious, but we do have a paver driveway system proposed on the plan.
And to the drywall question, you didn't answer the second half of Ted's comment. And I'll look for Jerry to weigh in as well. And Christine, if you have some thoughts.
The drywall question?
Yeah, there was a question about, if you remember Ted's comment about being in a flood zone and, and really the piping system brings it out into the storm system that goes into the lake. And his question was, would you consider a drywall system? And if you have thoughts about that, please share and I'll look for our professionals to do the same.
And currently, just to make a point, the pavers shown are impervious, not pervious. Correct?
They're calculated as 100% impervious.
Okay.
Mr. Shipers, you'd be willing to make it a condition of the application that those pavers would in fact be pervious, even though I think the town's credit is 50%, but you would make them pervious. Is that a condition you're willing to accept?
Yes, it is.
Once again, back to the drainage, storm drainage.
So if I could weigh in a second. And it's all good points that are brought up by Ted. Because the impacts of the new development greatly reduce the amount of impervious area from the site, one, that's a huge benefit to the town.
Yep.
That property so close to the lake, I don't know what kind of recharge we're going to get in the ground because of high groundwater. But it does bring up the point about basements and if basements are being proposed for the site. But if, if the applicant would consider having a couple of borings done to see where the groundwater is and we can squeeze something in for the roof drains, maybe that could be a compromise if they would accept that.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we could do something in the front yards, Jerry. So halfway between the porch and the right away, we can put some sort of a system in if in fact the groundwater would allow us to do such.
And then just to touch on the flooding, to bring that up, the properties are located in the flood zone. So any, any proposed home would have to meet the borough's flood plan requirements. So there would be no permitted living space below, you know, 10 feet or whatever the base flood elevation is in that area, 10 plus one.
We would conform with whatever the code enforcement officer enforces. And the first floor is set at elevation 14, which is three feet above the magic number.
The 10 plus one that Christine mentioned, yeah. So just coming back to this, would you be willing, Mr. Shipers, to make that a condition of the application? What Mr. DeFalco had outlined in terms of that front yard system and, and Jerry's request of potentially doing some level of boring to see where groundwater levels are at?
Richie, it seems like you're in favor of that. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, in favor. As part of the drain from the roof system, we can catch the water, infiltrate some of it before it's discharged into the pipe which goes to Silver Lake.
We'd accept the condition.
So this would be in addition to the pipe system, it would be basically an interrupt where you could try to charge it before it moves in? Okay.
Exactly.
Mr. Kovacs, you're okay with that in terms of outlining that condition? You can give me a thumbs up because I can't hear the eloquent things you're saying. Thank you. All right, Mr. Burke, I think you were next up, please.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
You thought I did. I don't have questions, comments. I have questions.
Welcome back on comments. Any other board questions before we go to the public?
Yes, I have a question on the side yard. For a proposed lot 104, I see it's 3.7. Is that as a result of the bay window or some sort of protrusion from the side of the?
Yes, yes, the bay window-
Large, the wall itself is set back.
The wall itself is another two and a half feet away.
So that exceeds, generally, it exceeds the five yard on the side. And-
Three of the home is exceeding five feet.
And one other comment is that it was noted that the, the fence line would run even though it would get reduced beyond the building fronts. That it would get reduced to four feet. Can we set that back a few feet so that there'd be some planting to just planting in lieu of fence right up to the sidewalk line?
I'd like to readdress that, Rich, where the fence ends.
The, the fence ends at the front of the Bishop's Home.
The six foot fence, but the six foot fence was awful.
No, there's no fence beyond that.
And I take that back. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think, I think what he said, Nick, was that there's not going to be a fence in this setback. I had the same question.
Okay. I didn't quite get it that way. All right. Thank you.
No problem. Anything else, Nick? No, you're good? Okay. All right. At this point, I'm going to open it up to the public for questions or comments. If you have a question or comment, please raise your hand. Once again, I'll remind you, please state your name, spell it and provide your street address. I'll also ask everyone to be courteous of all the participants here. So please be efficient with your questions or comments, just in the interest of giving everyone the opportunity for, for airtime in terms of questions or comments. I'll ask the professionals to be available for question. And you can certainly unmute yourself as you respond to those questions and or comments. So at this point, if anyone has a question or a comment, please raise your hand.
Okay, first one up is Vicki Renner.
Ms. Renner?
Hi, Vicki Renner, 1106 D Street, Belmar.
Could you spell your name for us, please?
R E N N E R.
Just like on the screen. Thank you.
I have quite a few questions, but I think a lot of them, Doug Kovacs and Christine Bell seemed to address all my initial thoughts, was when the discussion of a 50 foot front yard across the, you know, on Seventh Avenue, they were comparing the homes in the area saying whether it was an R50 or 40 zone. And I think when you drive in that neighborhood, it used to be the Montessori school. When you would look across on those smaller lots, they were small cottage-like houses. So my question is, in my mind, without seeing everything that you guys are looking at, when you divvy up these little spaces into the R50 or R40 and you're building a home that is not exactly a cottage with four bedrooms and all these parking spaces, they're going to look more like they said, I believe, who said it? Falco said something about they will resemble that to the west, the lots more to the west to be, you know, visually like that, which those homes have, like they said, a larger setbacks. They're not sure. So are we building cottages to look in these smaller little spaces that you're creating? Or are we building large homes on smaller spaces to look like it blends in with the bigger homes going down towards the west? So that was, they, they kind of addressed, I think they both nailed that right on the head. Christine Bell and Doug Kovacs asked what you're creating as far as how many lots. And it was also confusing when I first logged on and looked, I tried to look up the blueprints or whatever. But I wasn't sure in this subdivision of what we're doing, is the Bishop's Home included in this subdivision? Anybody?
Mr. Shipers or Mr. DeFalco, if you could respond to that question?
Yes, the Bishop's Lot is included. Yes, it is included.
So that's how I thought I understood it, that that's why it's coming to this board as, as a subdivision, as one parcel that they're now subdividing. So if you just bulldoze that entire, everything that was on that lot, including, sorry, the Bishop's Home, and you did a 50 by 150 deep, they would totally be one conforming to the larger homes that they, you know, I don't know how big these homes look, but four bedroom homes. I have a monstrosity on 12th and A that was created on a postage stamp there. And it's bizarre to look at. So the other, I have my statement question is, when you go and you consider what you will decide on this, you weren't given some architectural plans, if I'm understanding correctly. You were confused of what the garage will look like. What does the driveway look like? Is it pavers or is it blacktop?
The driveway is pavers. It's on the plan.
Okay. So without architectural plans to the, I believe, the Bishop's Home, and do you have renderings of what these homes look like on the front of the three that are being built on Seventh Avenue?
No, but we had Mr. Kinsel testify as to what he typically builds in Belmar, which is well known. And that's the testimony on the record. What they're going to look like is what is built in, in the borough to date.
Well, I don't disagree that Mr. Kinsel builds beautiful homes, but when you're subdividing a piece of property, if I was sitting on the board, which I did for 20 years as a vice chairman, I would like to see what, what's your end result that you're voting on, what you're going to get. What's the design? What's the, everybody raised great questions. They were asking you where the fence is going to go, where the air conditioners are going to go, how are you going to take your garbage out? You know, what's, they're asking for some green space there. Where is the green space? You had Ted brought up, please don't put any large boulders. We have an ordinance, believe it or not, that says no stones, no gravel in the front of homes. You're supposed to have grass. And if you drive around Belmar with a lot of these new homes that are being built, they throw gravel down when no one's looking. Or maybe they are looking and just don't pay attention to the ordinance.
Other questions being asked by Ms. Renner? I appreciate her comments, but that's-
Okay, the question is, when you're, when you're, okay, there's no landscaping plan. Is there a reason why there was no landscaping plan presented? Is there a reason why there's no architectural plan presented? Answer the questions that I have.
Those plans may vary based upon the end users' particularized desires and intent. But that's also subject to myself, Ms. Earn, and to Mr. Kinsel. We're controlling the project at this point in time to deliver a particularized product. Now, Ms. Renner, also to your, your comment about the size of the lots and even to the planner, if, if, if the plan renders to, let's say, 75 foot wide lots on Seventh, you have side yard setbacks of five and 10, that would give me the ability to build a 60 foot wide house or two 60 foot wide houses. You could still build to the same building coverages. I could still build to the same impervious coverages. What I've heard from objector after objector for year after year, no more big houses or limit big houses. Where are the affordable houses being built to bring new people into the community? So now we're faced with sitting down and looking at, at, at the footprint months ago and making decisions. Do we want to try to build two, quote, more mammoth houses here as of right? Or do we want to make the homes fit within the community, within the neighborhood, but just as the community is calling for with 50 foot wide lots up and down the street with generally 35 foot wide beautiful homes to put, for me to put two 60 foot wide houses there, it's going to look ridiculous. And everyone on the board knows that. Now, I get the concept of Ms. Bell and I get the concept of, of Mr. Kovacs's comments, and those are comments and questions. But we have to look at what's there now, what the church wants to get through this property. You're being presented an opportunity to have three beautiful homes that are within size and scale, and that's how it's being developed.
Okay, well, to your response, I would say if I had a rendering and I would see what it looked like, I wouldn't have those questions, but I don't have that. So I don't know what they look like. You're saying 60 foot versus, you know, three cottage-like places to fit in, but I don't know what they look like. So that's why I'm asking.
The other- I don't, I don't, you know, I don't object to your question. You're almost asking this board to consider granting preliminary site plan approval per, have to make a decision on four versus three, and then you want me to come back with elevation. But before I'm going to do that, I have to have a very strong idea whether this deal is going to go through and accomplish the desires and intent of the council and the bishop. You know, if, if this board does not want, want this property redeveloped or redeveloped in the near future or wants something other than being proposed, that's what I'm going to listen to from this board. But we've brought forth what we think is the best plan that serves the Bishop's desires, the desires of the council, and a project that we can feasibly bring to the public. That would be the best intent for Belmar.
Okay. And with that being said, I would add then, I would have a strong suggestion, which is, I've heard many of the members discuss if it was to be granted, if it was to be this, there's all these conditions that are put on many applications with the approval. And my question is, who makes a list of the conditions that you are setting as a board? And whose job is it to follow through with a checklist that all the conditions that you have requested have been followed through?
Now, Ms. Renner, you know that answer. You sat on board for a long time. Mr. Kovacs does that. He's very competent. He takes everything that we do tonight. Put it in resolution form every-
To the chair, to the chair on that comment, to the chair on that comment. Respectfully, I, I know Mr. Shipers would like to give me as much business as possible.
Correct.
Two comments if I could, Mr. Chair. Number one, to Ms. Renner's comment and to Mr. Shipers' response. Application this evening is simply for the subdivision. And I, and I hear what Ms. Renner is saying, with Mr. Shipers in this instance, so I want to make sure that the board understands. In a subdivision, basically, the applicant is not applying for site plan relief. They're not showing and they're not obliged to show you what the finished product will be. They are obliged, in my view, to show you what I would characterize as a footprint to demonstrate that they, that they can build something, quote unquote, conforming for side yard, front yard, rear yard, or conforming based upon the relief that they are seeking. It's always better for us to see those things, which is why we went to the comments before with Mr. Shipers of, you know, at least- you know, at least, because I know he does not have a site plan at this point in time, that we can at least get certain assurances that it's gonna be an architecturally pleasing design which conforms with the requirements, our general requirements in the ordinance. As to the other issue, to Ms. Renner's question, there will be a list of conditions that's going to be placed in the application. To that extent, I agree with Mr. Schypers. But once the resolution has been approved, again, because I want to be, to think that we're doing something that's not permissible. Once the resolution is approved, it then goes before those individuals who issue permits.
Correct.
And there's sometimes a condition of the applicant to prepare a writing, and I will tell you, there will be this condition in this instance, prepare a writing, the applicant's counsel prepares a writing demonstrating for our engineer to review that the conditions have been satisfied or that there have been provisions made to satisfy those conditions. And unless and until those things are done, then you're not going to be able to continue to get your permits and continue to build. I don't have that function because the Planning Board's jurisdiction is one of limited jurisdiction. And after the effort comes off the board for those approvals, the conditions of those approvals then go to those individuals in the municipality in combination with the engineer, who may prepare a writing occasionally, finding out where you are with your approvals. If it takes, it may take some time to get the maps filed, they review those, et cetera, et cetera. But it's not a function that the board attorney does. But it's a function of the engineer with our, to confirm that those conditions have been approved. And if they've not been approved, then it shouldn't be issuing permits.
Correct. So just, okay, just to follow through with what you said, my suggestion to the board with all the questions I had regarding your conditions is that whichever you grant towards from here on in or in the future, I would strongly suggest you appoint someone to follow through after you've made a decision on any application, on your conditions, and make sure as a board, everything that you wanted was followed through with what you asked for. You know, on any application. And two other things. If you do take this down in the tree they spoke about, someone spoke about a tree in the front of that property. I do believe it was dedicated to the teacher at the Montessori school that when she passed away or when they were doing it there. So if there was any way to take it and put it someplace else in town, Mrs. Fosdick was the leader there of the Montessori school, and I believe that was dedicated to her over there. And I guess that's it. I was also taught on the board, take it with you, that everything you approve goes with the property, not the applicant. Meaning in fifty years from now, when we're all not here, anything you approve from here in on in and anything you've done in the past, no matter who owns the property, what you vote on will be, the structure will be there. But the person who comes before you may be gone. So you create, whatever you create and whatever you vote on through everything through this evening, it's for the future of the town of Belmar. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. And by the way, the tree that's out front is a street tree along the curb line. I think there might be a separate tree that I would ask the applicant to keep in mind that may be potential for relocation if it were dedicated, as Ms. Renner had said. April, our next participant who'd like to offer a question?
Hello? Ms. Winters? Yes, hi. My name is Lynn Winters. I reside at four one zero Seventh Avenue in Belmar. Ms. Bell and Mr. Kovacs asked many of the questions that I had. But I do have, I do want to ask a question here. So I understand the property is in the R seventy-five zone. And if it were to be zoned to conforming, there would be three houses. So the applicant is asking for four houses. And I understand that he is going for the C one variance, the hardship for the minister's house, and I understand that. But I don't understand how the bulk variance applies to the three homes that he's proposing on Seventh Avenue. I know that in order to be granted a bulk variance, you have to meet five of the criteria under the MLUL. And when I look at the master plan, I see that the property is located in the R seventy-five zone. On page nine, it is part of the storm surge map from Sandy. Part of the master plan also mentions that property on page sixty-five, property around the coastal lakes that were impacted by Hurricane Sandy should be considered for transition to non-residual uses or have stricter development guidelines. The borough should encourage a reduction in residential uses or intensity of uses where they are most vulnerable. So I'm just asking the applicant, how does that fit in? How do you expect to get a bulk variance when you're really going against the master plan?
Richie, I would suggest, from your planner perspective, inform Ms. Winters about.
Okay, I got it, okay. So let's start with number two first, your storm surge and your, we should plan for less development within the area that could be potentially in harm's way with something like a hurricane or a superstorm Sandy. I'd say that would hold true for the low-lying properties that are not properly elevated and engineered according to the standards for flood protect. And I would agree with that if we were building a low-lying home and expected it to flood, which we really couldn't even pull a building permit anymore now. We have to build to the standard. We have to elevate the home. We have to build it above the flood elevation out of harm's way.
I understand that, but I'm just reading what the master plan reports. And if you look at the map, that property is clearly in that particular area where on page sixty-five, it says that the borough should encourage a reduction in residential uses, yet you're asking for an increase. I also have another question. Well, first, I do want to point out one thing. I know you keep mentioning about a transitional zone with the R forty. Just to let you know, and I'm sure you're aware, the R forty zones are triangular pieces of property. The block is triangular. The R seventy-five blocks are rectangular. So that's why they are fifty by one fifty, and the R forties are smaller. Just a point. Okay, one other question I have. So you've mentioned that these three homes would fit into the neighborhood and that they would align with the streetscape. And I know Mr. Kovacs mentioned to you that the homes across the street, if you look on Google Maps, you'll see that they have driveways, whereas these three homes don't here. Where can you tell me, in Belmar, on a R seventy-five zone, not along the ocean, because it says in the master plan that you can build an R fifty-type house on an R seventy-five piece of property? That is a conditional use. But where else in Belmar do you have an R seventy-five piece of property where this developer has developed R fifty homes on it?
I would have to go through the borough's lots and research that for you. Off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to tell you an address or a street.
Okay, because I don't think there are any, because let me tell you, I walk these streets all the time. I know where the R fifty homes are because the driveway through the backyard is a little bit awkward. But it does look nice on Ocean Avenue. It's a nice front. I know there are some, I think, on Thirteenth. But I do not believe there are any other homes in the R seventy-five zone that has the driveways in the back according to the R fifty zone.
Yeah, and that's mostly because most of the lots pre-existed any subdivisions. It's very rare that you get a twenty-two-thousand-square-foot lot in Belmar that's available for development.
Well.
Most of these lots are single lots, and they've been there since nineteen twenty.
All right, well.
You're not gonna see that.
Well, the house that I live in right now is actually part of a subdivision too, that a owner subdivided into two lots instead of three lots. So, you know, my lot is conforming, and it was part of a bigger parcel. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Winters. April, our next member of the public? Still see some hands raised in the box?
Good morning. Can you hear me? Or good afternoon?
Okay, I'm sorry, you were muted. Can you repeat your name, spell it, and provide your street address?
Dan Connolly, C O N N O L L Y, seven oh six D Street in Belmar. I have a series of questions that, while covered, weren't answered, weren't answered completely. First of all, there was a mention of garbage and recyclables. There was made mention of both Seventh Avenue and D Street as the possible repository for these garbages. What is the answer? Is it Seventh Avenue or is it D Street?
Mr. Schypers or Mr. DeFalco, please?
Yeah, Bill, I think I would propose that.
We have no great desire to pick or choose one location. D Street has its advantages, Seventh has its advantages.
Bill, I've got a suggestion. The bishop goes to D Street, as he does today. The corner lot goes to D Street, and the two lots on Seventh to the west go to Seventh. So two on Seventh, two on D.
Two on Seventh, two on D. Would that be mandated under this variance or under this zoning board? Or is this strictly voluntary compliance?
It could be stipulated and follow through as a.
All right, well, my concern is under, first of all, if you get three, if you end up allowing the resident to make his own decision on where it gets dropped, nobody wants to be staring at three people's garbage lined up right in a row on D Street where there was none any before. And I'd like the, I would like the board to take that into account. The second issue I have is parking and traffic flow. You mentioned the driveway coming out. How many spots would be lost on D Street to gain access to that parking, park in the driveway?
The opening is twenty feet at the curb line. So it would be twenty plus the paint, probably twenty-five feet, twenty-six feet of loss of space. So maybe one and one-and-a-half spots.
That's not taking into account the existing spots that are located there due to the fire hydrants and other areas as well. So it's safe to assume that there's at least two spots lost, possibly even as many as three.
That's what I'm anticipating, but if that's what you're saying.
Well, again, I'm not a planner. I understand that. I'm just going by what you're, you're talking twenty-one spots, twenty-one feet, and you're buttoning up to the, buttoning up to the fire hydrant. There could be some problems there. Again, when you spoke earlier about the parking and traffic flow issues, you mentioned the seventy-six spots that were being saved by turning this into residential. Did you account for the variance that the town allowed the church to have additional parking on the opposite side of D Street during high-density hours?
No, we just commented that there is no parking on-site and that the number should have been seventy-six on-site. The fact that they park on D Street or Seventh or wherever they park was not really discussed. It was the lack of on-site parking that was brought up to the board.
But again, I understand that, but there was a variance allowed by the town to park on D Street, both on Eighth Avenue and Seventh Avenue during high-density hours, which essentially is one to two times a week that the building was being used. Even when the school was being used, it was only being used from eight-thirty to two-thirty, five to ten years ago. The concern that I have as a resident is that you are funneling an additional amount of traffic onto D Street. And as previous people have pointed out, these communal driveways, none of that that I know of have ever entered onto a street. They've all been onto avenues, which are wider and/or one-way. D Street is much smaller, and you have additional stop signs. Did that come into play when you did your traffic flow or your parking analysis?
Yes, it did. I mean, D Street is thirty feet wide. It's very wide relative to two-way traffic flow. So there's no issue with the size of D Street. It's adequately sized, thirty feet is pretty much wider than any new street that's built in New Jersey.
Okay. But not in Belmar?
If there was a new street in Belmar, I wouldn't know where to put it.
Exactly. Again, it's my, it's my contention that you're losing parking spots. You're not gaining parking spots due to the breaking down of the residence. And I'm wondering, is there any way that you could gain on-street parking on D Street? Or and/or Seventh Avenue? And has that even been thought of?
I'm not sure of the question, but we're not touching Seventh Avenue. You can park up and down Seventh Avenue along the entire frontage with no driveway cuts. If we had three driveway cuts on Seventh, we would lose definitely three spots and maybe more.
But isn't that zoned right now for handicap parking?
That was only because of the church. There won't be any need for handicap parking for a house.
Right, and that would have to, and that would have to be zoned out, correct?
Zoned out or just striped out, yeah.
All right, now, has there been any thought into possibly relocating the fire hydrant on D Street and creating additional parking on D Street there?
I don't believe so. We meet the on-site parking requirement. There's no requirement for us to have on-street parking. So whatever the borough sees best relative to on-street parking, our site is not impacting on-street parking because we have adequate on-site parking. Whereas the church has no on-site parking and use the street entirely as their parking lot.
And again, I understand that, but they did make accommodations for that by allowing dual-side parking during high-density hours, which are no longer available. Isn't that correct?
I'm not aware of that variance. But again, that may be a variance, but it's still impacted the local street when it happened. What we're saying is that our development is not gonna impact the local people because we don't need anything on the street. Everything is on-site. With no impact to local street.
So your stipulation in front of the board is saying that there will be no, there'll be no impact to parking with these three houses on D Street and Seventh Avenue?
No. No impact to the local street system since we meet the code onsite, correct?
All right, I'd, I'd ask the board that lives in Belmar to actually think about that when voting. I- i- is that an, is that an actual, you know, in-practice theory?
Hey, interesting comment, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is interesting questioning, but it's not comment time for Mr. Connolly. He can reserve those for comment time.
All right, I'll move on. I have another question. What, what is your, uh, per, um, how are you going to deal with snow removal on a communal driveway?
There are lawn areas on either side of the driveway. And if there's a tremendous amount of snow, which is typically not the case, but if there is the case, we will do like others do that have an area where they use a, a front-end loader and get it out of the way and not just push it somewhere and leave a pile. So we'll, we'll, we'll handle that with the front-end loader if need be, but typically you get two inches of snow and it's gone the next day in Belmar, typically.
Again, I, I respectfully disagree with you on that effect. But earlier your testimony was that each, each resident has control of each portion of the driveway. Isn't that correct?
That's right. So if Lot One oh three wants to shovel his driveway and put, and pile it on his grass, he's entitled to do that. If the three get together and say, let's hire the, the plow guy for fifty bucks, they'll do that. So I'm sure they're going to talk. They're not going to be enemies, but if each one wants to do his own thing, they can. If they want to do it jointly, they can. But I don't see snow as being an issue.
A- again, a- a- as someone who's lived in, on this street, I, I respectfully disagree uh, in that area. Snow removal is something.
Same objection, Mr. Chairman. It's, this is question, not Mr. Connolly's. Time to point out his, uh.
Now, uh, I, again, I respectfully disagree, uh, Mr. Snipes, because I responded to his question, which is inaccurate, h- his statement, which is inaccurate. So I'm correcting the board's, uh, posture.
You're claiming it's inaccurate. That's where the board to make decisions. It's your time now to ask questions and he will give answers.
And, and if the answers are incorrect, I'm allowed to, I'm not allowed to, I'm not allowed to correct them?
Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to you, uh, so that we can move the hearing in progress.
Yeah, I, I think in the interest of time, it should be held to questions. Uh, I don't want it to go back and forth. If you have certainly a quick comment, you can make it, but we really want to try to keep this to questions because there are other people in line and quite frankly, uh, Mr. Connolly, there's another application pending behind this, so if we can, try to hold it to questions.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. I see there's still a few hands raised. April, if we can go to, uh, our next.
Hi, Linda Sharkus, four hundred Fourth Avenue. I live in one of those fifty R fifty houses on the corner of Fourth and C. Fifty by a hundred, back garage on C Street. I listened to Mr. Shipers talk about maintaining the character of the neighborhood. So those houses in the neighborhood all have driveways up the side of their property and detached garages. To me, that would be maintaining the character and I think it eliminates a lot of the problems that have been brought forth. You, um, Ms., Ms. Winters talked about the issue of having the back alley, as did Mr. Connolly. And really what you have is, um, issues with people maintaining the yard. If you eliminated having the back alley and put curb cuts like the other houses on the street, I, I would think it would be a good project. And if you look at it, that the two, if the bishop's house was only fifty by a hundred and the interior lot was fifty by one fifty, you would have a traditional corner. And since the bishop has the larger lot, you're essentially doing what are, exists on a number of corners in Belmar with fifty by a hundred. We just have three fifties in a row instead of two and two. So I'd like to suggest, and my comment is that I think it would be a good application if you eliminated the alley and all the problems associated with it. Because you could achieve all the parking and long driveways like the other people in town have. Thank you.
Ms. Sharkus, if I may briefly address, um, your comments, I thank you for saying that you, um, you like the application, but for a couple of suggestions. We, um, candidly agonized over this discussion when we were, uh, laying out the, uh, the properties. There were references to, uh, in our discussions when Mayor Pringle desired to attempt to limit cars in particular in the summertime parked in front of front yard setbacks where Belmar looked in the good mayor's, um, words like Staten Island. As a result, there was a passage of a front yard setback parking ordinance that Ms. Sharkus, you're probably aware of, that you cannot park a car for zoning purposes from the front of the house to, um, to the property line. But just as some good citizens here have talked about enforcement, try to enforce in a year or two or three or four when you have, uh, termed them the Sharkus driveways right now to at least two of the homes leading to the back. We've laid them out with five-foot and ten-foot side yard setbacks so we could accommodate theoretically the Sharkus driveway alternative. We felt, and, uh, both Ms. Hearn and Mr. DeFalco felt that the rear one, uh, curb cut, one entryway, um, with more beautiful plantings, appropriate spacing of reasonably sized and with homes would be the most beautiful, best application, um, for that. This is one of those damn do, damn don't kind of situations, I'm sorry, Bishop, that, uh, using that type of language, when, uh, you know, people approach us and they say, you know what? We, we prefer rear-load garages into our homes. We appreciate the theory of detached garages. They're pretty nice in clement weather, but you get to the brutal nor, nor Easter leaves of November through March where you have to make it to your car in your garage. There's a lot of disadvantages to the traditional detached, let's stick the garage at the very back of the property. We think more modern desires, more modern ways people prefer to live is to be able to enter their car or their garage uh, from their principal living space. If in fact I listen to comments and the board says to me, Mr. Shipers, can you perhaps entertain driveways down, um, and create two curb cuts on Seventh? Uh, and perhaps bring the, uh, the, the corner in from the, uh, from D Street with, uh, one curb cut? I would certainly consider it, but none of us have felt with due respect to your position. Uh, and you have a lovely home. No one, uh, on our side thought that that was the better idea, but it was close. We debated it for quite some time.
But, Mr. Shipers, kitchens and outdoor living cellhouses, you didn't put in a big porch in the front and your, your back to backyard living is kind of, will be non-existent because you have an eighteen-foot driveway on the back of a hundred-foot lot.
To the contrary, we're going to have, um, beautiful front porches. That's, uh, the essence of living in Belmar, one of the beauties for the.
Yes, I know.
Summer breezes, so.
But I, I, but as, uh.
But I'll, I'll await board comment and also hear them out as to what they think of your, your suggestion. Thank you, Ms. Sharkus.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before we go to the next, uh, representative of the public, uh, we are at nine-thirty PM. Uh, the second application, uh, I regret not raising my hand earlier, so I apologize to the second application, but, uh, the application for nine-hundred Main Street will not be heard tonight. Uh, we will not have sufficient time to go through that application. April, Doug, we will need to, uh, really determine next meeting as to when that application will be heard so that, uh, the applicant can advise their professionals of that. Do we have, uh, a date for a potential follow-up meeting where we can present?
The next meeting is August seventeenth.
And I don't think we have the applicant on the line, but.
I can bring them on, hold on one second.
Let's, let's see if we can bring the applicant online and see if they'll agree to waive the time limits and if we can accommodate them for next, next meeting, August. Try to put them on first, so then we're going to get through this application.
Absolutely. I agree, but let's see if we can get the applicant on April and, and confirm the date and we will prioritize their application on the front because I'm sure a lot of people in the audience, were here to, uh, hear both applications or perhaps the second.
With apologies to Mr. Shipers.
I don't see the attorneys anymore, John Sardo or John Junko or Alec Taylor, if you're here.
I will go get them, April. They're in the same building as me, next door, right there. John Junko's right here.
Oh wait, there they are, hold on, I got it.
Bye.
So, John, we're looking at what, August seventeenth, April?
Yes.
And my apologies for not raising the flag earlier. Uh, obviously, we didn't realize, uh, the time that this application was going to go through and it's well-invested, but uh, we'll bring it to the front of the agenda, but does that date work for you, John?
Yes, I'm pretty sure it does. Give me one more second, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. John, yes, Mr. Chairman, the seventeenth is fine. Mr. Junko, can I get you, for purpose of the record, to agree to waive time limits with the understanding that we're going to get you on August seventeenth, twenty-twenty?
Sure, uh, we'd certainly agree to extend through August thirty-one and further if needed.
Very gracious of you, Mr. Junko, thank you.
Thank you. And again, my apologies for not raising the flag earlier.
Well, uh, we appreciate it. We, uh, thought about raising the question and then saw that you were so engaged. Anyway, thank you for your time tonight and, uh, we'll see you on the seventeenth.
All right, thank you, John. Okay, if we can go, April, to the next, uh, member of the public, and, and I'm going to remind everyone, it's, please ask questions. Um, it's very important that we stay focused because we would like to at least get through this application this evening. I see Mr. Creamers there, yes. Jean?
Eugene Creamer, Fourth Avenue.
The address on Fourth, Mr. Creamer?
Three eighteen Fourth Avenue.
Thank you.
Fifteen thousand square foot corner lot, R seventy-five zone.
Thank you for that emphasis. Please, questions, please hold it to questions, not comments.
Okay, I'll, I'll limit it to, uh, to the, to a question. Regarding stormwater, and I know there's been discussion about that. Uh, it's always been my understanding in Belmar that, uh, the street drains are to drain the water off the street and perhaps the sidewalk. I, I'd like to know is, number one, if, if the applicant is going to drain his project onto the streets of Belmar, will the discharge be daylighted? Will we actually be able to see what's going out into the street? The reason I'm asking that question is, if you hide the discharge in an underground pipe, then the only thing that Public Works can do when it sees dead fish floating on the lake is try to figure out where the pollution is coming from. Is, are any discharges to the street going to be daylighted so that the DPW and the neighbors can actually see what's being discharged?
Mr. DeFalco, your plan, I think, is not to daylight. It's underground pipe tied in directly to that inlet structure, correct?
That is correct. Underground pipe and the water that gets to the inlet that we're tying in the pipe to is the same water that if we did not have underground pipe would run o- over the lawn, over the sidewalk, down the driveway into the street and into the same inlet. So the same amount of water, only it goes a different route. I don't believe there's anything on the residential lot that will be tied into the pipe to, to perform an illegal discharge of any toxic material from a residential lot. I mean, bad people do bad things. You could dump a quart of oil down the inlet grate anytime you want, but I don't believe that's a typical situation and that's not going to happen on this property.
How can you guarantee that, sir?
You can't guarantee it.
We, we've already had those sort of problems historically, okay?
You can guarantee it.
Why can't you daylight it?
We could let the water from the roof run over ground. It still doesn't prohibit somebody from putting a pipe under the ground, a secret pipe and tying it to this pipe that you're afraid of. I mean, if people want to do bad things, they'll do it. We want to go by the rules, it's going to be fine. We can't, we can't guarantee that somebody who's bad won't do a bad thing.
Jerry, can I ask you your thoughts on, um, this point of concern in terms of, is our preference to have it tied in direct or is our preference to have daylight in town in general?
It's always better to have it tied in for, for many, many reasons. I do understand the concern of the gentleman that brought the question forward. Uh, but that could happen at any time, anywhere. The fact that the applicant's looking to, to do a direct tie-in, I think, is a benefit to the borough.
Okay, yes, Mr. Campbell, please.
Yeah, um, with DPW and code enforcement, we do prefer that we, uh, tie it directly into the underground.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Creamer, other questions?
No, I just thought that the lake perhaps, uh, should be protected. It's an environmental gem.
Yeah, I think we all agree with that.
Yeah, well, this is not the way to do it. It should be visible. That way, not just the DPW, but also the neighbors, uh, we, we'd be able to see if something's being discharged. And especially those yard drains. Are we going to tell, uh, the landscape people? Are they going to cover those drains when that, when they, they go with fertilizer or herbicide or pesticide? Or is that, or does that just go down the drain into the lake?
Well, I, I don't, if you have a question, that's fine. I think you're making a comment. And I don't know whether they're going to give the landscape any instructor and instructions in terms of covering up those inlets.
Okay, that's it. I'm very disappointed.
Thank you. Others, I see there's three more hands raised. Good evening.
Hey, hello, my name is Jeff Racer. I live at five oh six Seventh Avenue. I'm an engineer and a numbers guy. Um, my wife and my two little boys live here with me, so we look directly across the street at the church. Uh, I just wanted to briefly make one statement, but Mr. Kovats, Mr. Forte and Ms. Bell, you guys handled yourselves eloquently and, uh, provided me confidence in this team. Uh, so I, I must make one more statement, which is I have yet to receive any notification about this development. We've gotten no letters, notices, phone calls uh, that could alert us to, uh, what really amounts to rezoning a low-density area to a more dense area. So, um, in, in the response that I heard was, uh, to introduce new family affordable homes? So can I ask, how much are these new family affordable homes expected to sell for?
We are, um, precluded and, and I am often limited and silenced, sir, with, uh, due respect, that economies and economics, uh, that economies and economics are not to be brought before the board. There's a lot of case law that says strict dollars and cents. Presenting, arguing, negotiating thereon is improper and would result in a either overturn or a remand. So while I would prefer to answer your question, they will sell for less than what two large 60-foot wide homes would have to sell for for feasibility to occur for the council and the bishop to acquire movement of their property.
Before we move on, I'm, I'm a little concerned with the, the comment that there was no notice provided. You're directly across the street.
Yes, that's correct.
Chairman, I checked the documents and a notice was mailed, but they did not receive the green card back, which means that it's probably sitting at the post office because they weren't unable to serve it or they didn't pick it up.
That's incorrect. I did go to the post office recently.
I'm sorry, Mr. Racer, go ahead.
That was incorrect, April. I have gone to the post office often and there was nothing waiting for us there.
I have the white, white certified mail slip that shows it was mailed.
Okay, well, regardless, it was not received. It was a little bit troubling, obviously, as you might assume. The second question I'd like to ask is who benefits from an expanded R50 transition zone? Or excuse me, R40 transition zone, whatever this is. Who directly benefits from the expansion of a transition zone? And this is for Mr. DeFolko.
Well, we don't have anything really called out as a transition zone, so we could probably start with that. But Mr. DeFalco, if you could respond to the question.
I believe the borough benefits because it's going to make the neighborhood beautiful. It's one of the proofs that we put on the, on the record, a visual, visually visual environment with creative development technique. So I believe the borough in general will benefit from the question that you asked.
So if the intention is to make the neighborhood beautiful, then how does building three, 3,000 square foot homes on undersized lots with non-similar driveways, non-similar curb look, you know, appeal? This is a totally non-conforming deal. This is, it's a hard sell and you guys know it, obviously. So, you know, as a numbers guy, look at what you're presenting and it's so biased that it's really hard to swallow because you're not highlighting what these, you highlight a 10% variance, right? That's not nothing. It's 2.7%, you know, but we're not discussing the 55% decrease on that cornered lot from 9,000 square feet to 5,000, right? You're obviously not going to highlight that because it hurts your argument. But when you look at these percentages, this is a, a big number. So how do you, how do you kind of reconcile that 55% decrease in the proposed corner lot?
As, as I said, the, the position that the applicant is taking, and I agree with is that we're benefiting the neighborhood. I hear that you're a numbers guy and that's fine, but numbers work both ways. So I believe that this is a better plan and you, you're entitled to your opinion.
Thank you. So next question, when were the parking and traffic reports performed?
The parking study was dated June 2020.
Okay, so June of 2020, it's safe to assume that St. Rose was not in session, whether it was COVID early June or whether it was out of session late June. It's also safe to assume that whatever was happening at the church was not, you know, going on. But if you were to say redo that parking study at a time when St. Rose is in session, maybe a funeral is also going on at the same time as school. You might have had a drastically different result in your discoveries.
I don't believe so. All of our parking is met, the requirement is met on site. So we can have wall-to-wall cars on 7th and D and C and 8th and 9th. Our site still functions independent of the street system. And that's what we explained to the board. Our site parking needs are met within the property lines and not within the borough right of it.
So currently on 7th Ave, we have a three-hour parking zone that runs the entire length of the church with the exception of the handicapped parking spot. Is that, that correct?
The handicap will go away.
Right. So what happens with the three-hour parking zone?
It's not, it's not ours to change. We meet our need on site.
So, so with your plan, that three-hour parking zone would remain in front of residents?
We aren't proposing to petition the borough to change the parking requirements or the signage or the regulations on the street.
Okay, so Mr. DeFalco, that's enough. Maybe somebody on the board could elaborate on what might be an appropriate resolution for that on site.
I'd like to talk a little bit about that if I can, Mr. Racer. So obviously, that particular parking relief, I'll call it, was granted as part of the church and probably goes back to relocation of the church or perhaps post-relocation. I don't think this application nor has the municipality entertained what to do. Does that three-hour parking get, you know, that relief, if you will, get extinguished if the, if the church is no longer there? That would be something we'd have to entertain should this application move to the next level. So I don't think we've necessarily gone through that, but that'll be something we'll go through with our professionals.
Okay, next question, the setbacks. Can you elaborate on what the setback would be from the new constructed house from the, I guess it's 50, probably 507 or maybe 505 right across the street from me? What would the distance be between the home that's currently there and the new proposed home be?
If you refer to the new lot numbers, it'd be easy for me.
Lot 2, you're talking, I think he's talking about lot 2, which is immediately east of the property.
Lot 2.
Immediately west of, of the property that's existing.
I'm sorry, west. I said east. I'm sorry. Correct.
Right, the home that will be east of lot 2 would be stepped back five feet from the property line in accordance with the minimum site.
So, so five feet, that, that sounds pretty close to me.
It's not close. It's ordinary. Today, it's a lot less. I think today the setback is 10 something, two feet? Three feet or something like that, but it's not five feet. So five feet is the borough standard in most zones, and this being one of them. So it's maybe closer than 10, but five is the minimum allowed by ordinance.
All right, well, last point I just want to make, speaking to Mr. Kramer, what he highlighted. You know, I've been here, I've watched major, yeah, I've watched some major rainfall happen. And interestingly, there doesn't appear to be major pooling of water, at the very least, on, on the north side of, of the church. So maybe it's different along D, maybe there's some major flooding, but I have observed no flooding on that side of the street as opposed to on our side of the street, which, which does flood quite a bit more. So I did want to highlight that. We don't appear to have a water issue here.
Thank you. Thank you for the insight.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I see two more hands up. April?
Okay, their hands were lowered, so give it one second and raise your hand again. There we go. Pamela and Michael?
Yes, so this is Pamela Pelicaro and I have my husband, Michael Pelicaro, with me also. We live at 507 7th Avenue.
Could you spell your name for us, Pamela?
E isn't Peter, E L L I C H E R O.
Okay, and once again, your street address, please.
My street address is 507 7th Avenue. Yes, and my house is adjacent to the property that we are talking about. Just to let you know, I, I really don't think, I'm going to try to just stick with questions. I do have a lot of comments and concerns. I'm hoping we have time for that as well. But I will try to stick with just some questions that I have. I, I don't, I'm going to start by saying, I don't think anyone would argue that single-family homes would be an improvement to the property. But my question that I have is, is what is the logic or benefit to the town to abandon the master plan or the intent and purpose of the zone plan? The planning board reviewed the master plan in 2016, actually right after I bought my house, and they did not make any changes. This is in the middle of R75. I don't even think it's considered transition. It's in the middle of R75. According to the land use map, the property is owned R75. It's a low density. How is changing this to a medium density lot going to benefit this neighborhood? How is putting a road in the back as opposed to driveways in the front like the rest of 7th Avenue from my house all the way to Main Street? How is that going with the existing neighborhood?
May I make a comment or respond to that last inquiry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I want to make sure, ma'am, I got your last name right. I don't want to mispronounce your name unless you allow me to call you Pamela.
Oh, that's fine. Pelicaro is my last name.
Okay, so Ms. Pelicaro, this is Mr. Shipers. I'm the attorney and the, the member attempting to make this happen. And I have not spoken to you yet nor heard from you, but you are one of the people that I do have some interest and concern for because you are the westerly property to this development, correct?
Yes, I am.
Now, Ms. Pelicastro, the, your side yard setback is about five feet from your property to your property line. Is that correct?
Actually, I think it's about three feet.
3.7. 3.7, sir.
All right. So if it's 4.7, that's a non.
Three, yeah, 3.7.
All right, 3.7, that's a non-conforming condition by 1.3 feet that you're too close to the property line if you were to build your house today.
Yes, but my house was built.
Hold on, I'm not done, I'm not done. So when I, I look and I've looked at the house that we've looked at next to yours, and I'm also interpreting your comments that you made. I potentially have the ability to move your, move our proposed house another five feet to the east to create a 10-foot setback between our property line and our house, which would increase probably what's current. There's very little there now, you'll admit, which will probably increase four feet or so to about 13 feet, probably triple the side yard setback that you have. Now, if I did that, I could either leave the driveways in the back and leave that to be peaceful green grass next to your home, which would be lovely. Or though if I take your suggestion about putting driveways like the rest of the road between the houses, I would be forced to put a driveway between the new home and your home to a garage in the back. That can easily be done. I could easily accept that and perhaps do that. But I think it would be more lovely for you to potentially have green and space and not have vehicles stacked next to your home.
Okay, can my husband talk?
It's Michael Pelicaro. Thank you, Mr. Shipers. Again, I, I just wanted to quick, we moved in, we knew the church was going to be taken down at some point. R75, we talked everybody downtown this building. We never thought this was going to come about as putting three homes in instead of two. We thought it was going to be two houses. I understand as far as the size of lot, size of home, square footage, all that. People have to make money. I get it. I get the whole idea. But my, my question truthfully is, as board members and as Belmar, how are we going to? We have to work together and I understand it's only a question, a question here at this point. But as my neighbor was saying earlier, Jeff, across the street, he didn't even receive the letter. And I don't want to be flustered right now, but I am a little bit, so I apologize for my voice. But this is really going to impact my home and I mean really impact my view and my, my view of the lake and the breeze that runs down this street. And I don't have, I just don't understand how the board of Belmar would approve this plan. And I know, no disrespect to you, Mr. Shiper. I totally understand you're doing, your builder makes beautiful homes. We moved in a Bummer four years ago. I have three young builders. I have three grandchildren. I believe I love this town and I honestly, I just respect all you gentlemen, all you are for what you do. I, I would love to be able to go further and make some comments. I hope you don't jam this down so it just gets approved. And I hope we have a bit, a more time to talk this out and really discuss what you guys plan on doing as far as there's going to be a tree in front. I understand, I'd rather not have a driver. You're actually right, sir. I'd rather not have a driver, but I'd rather not have a tree there, yes, as Mr. Shipers also, because then I can't, I won't be able to see five feet past my house, sir. And I get it. Everybody has good questions and good comments. But you understand, I'm going to be impacted by the most, and I know that you know that, Mr. Shipers. I know you know, as well, as well as you.
Let me respond. Let me respond.
Thank you.
For starters, myself and my team are one of the most reasonable, in our opinion, socially conscious redevelopers who come before the Belmar boards. We look to take everything into consideration. The big tree in front on 7th, I don't think that, as someone pointed out, I think maybe Mr. Frida pointed out, that tree is not on the property. That's in the town's right of way. So that tree, you know, we, we will just follow direction or do whatever the town wishes with that tree. Next to your property, I just want to point out a few things. And I don't say this in any retaliatory way. I only say it from the goodness of mine and the bishop's heart. If someone, no matter whether there's two or three homes next to you, sir, the code allow, would allow a 35-foot, two-and-a-half story home that can be built within five foot of the property line next to you. So from the perspective of preserving your views, that, that can be built if it was two lots, probably as of right. Any builder or someone who really wanted to try to, you know, turn the screws on, on you, an adjacent neighbor, they could, instead of a fence line, they could plant a 15, 20-foot line of arbivorous trees or shrubs that this board does not control and would eliminate any and all front. You're, you could sit on your porch forever. You'd never see the lake or you'd never see anything to the east. That's what bad developers do. That's what bad single-family home developers do. I don't want to do, do that. I would never do that. But I'm telling you, you got to be careful with who comes in to redevelop this land. If you were here from the beginning, you heard applicants came to the bishop and wanted to build apartments. They wanted to build townhouses. They wanted to build very high-density stuff. There was a reason why he selected us and this land to move forward. What I can offer you, because I want you happy, I can offer to move that house closer to the other houses I'm building. Now, to do that, I'm probably taking away a little bit of, of side yard openness to the, to the ultimate purposes of my home. But I would be then creating another five-foot side yard setback adjacent to your property that will certainly benefit you, especially if we only put in very low, low-lying landscaping and we don't fence more than six foot, more than halfway down the property line. These are things that, you know, I as a developer with, with the bishop would be willing to consider. But to do that, you know, I want you to be a favorable guy, not trying to say we're trying to turn this upside down. Because if it was only two, people need to understand, density is density, coverage is coverage and impervious is impervious. If it's only two lots, you can build a much grander home with the same impervious and with the same lot coverage. And you can, you can glob up the lots just as much more if you want to be a very aggressive developer. We're trying not to do this. We're trying to develop in scale reasonably, respect for the neighbors, only benefit the neighbors to get in our conscience and I think hopefully with the church. We don't want a different church to come in. We don't want a different religious sect to come in or another school to come in. We want to move this out of the neighborhood, but to, to have four beautiful homes. And I'm willing to work with you, but if you, if you're, you know, if you're not willing, then, you know, I'll leave the application as it is. But I'd like to try to satisfy you if I can. but I'd like to try to satisfy you if I can.
I, I appreciate that. Yeah, I would love to, again, I would like to sit down, maybe. I, yes, I, I really appreciate you making that offer. And again, I, I, which really came, you know, a hammer on my head came down real quick. I got a letter in the mail and all of them doing development, you know, I mean, I mean, so we have a lot of comments and a lot of questions. And again, I, I hope we get the respect of you guys and we can ask them questions at some point. And so I still don't understand, what is the logic and the benefit of town to abandon the master plan? I, I'm still so confused. Why are we gonna go- I understand, I get it. I, you know, I don't want a $6,000 square foot house next to me. I, I get that. I get that, sir. I understand. But so, so they have a bigger piece of property. I mean, why, why wouldn't we not just want a smaller home with a bigger piece of property opposed to three homes that are $3,000 square foot instead of two houses that are $3,000 square foot? And they got a big yard like I have. You know what I mean? They're, they're full back yard.
But sometimes feasibility to the parish comes into play. And, um, you know, I've been in step following their step, but, um, of course, it's great to have a, a, a large piece of property with a small home, but there, there's modern, uh, concerns that, uh, initiate against that sometimes.
I have a question for the board. Is this considered spot zoning?
Doug, would you like to respond to that?
Sure. In this instance, I would not consider it spot zoning. Um, the applicant is coming with a plan for C1 and C2 variances. They're not asking for, you know, this to all now be changed to R-50. That would be something they'd have to go to the governing body for. What they're trying to do is, is basically say, under the C2 criteria, this is a better zoning alternative than what was originally there. And again, the, the difference, difference is, it's my way of thinking. You know, had you had residential properties that conformed to R-75 zone there now.
Right.
If someone was coming in and saying, okay, I want residential properties to R-50, I, I could see how that argument could be made, but in this instance, what they're coming in and saying is, look, you had a conditional use there. Conditional uses by themselves fit within the zone, but you have to meet certain criteria. Here, we're gonna completely take out a non, a, a, either conditional use or a non-conforming use, and we're gonna come back in, we're gonna put residential use in here, but because we're doing that, we would like to put in, my way of, my way of thinking, a little higher density than would normally be permitted in the R-75 zone. So I see a distinction between spot zoning if you're going from residential to residential as opposed to a conditional use to a, a clearly permitted use at a higher density.
Okay, there was talk about the fact that the property, the church, was a non-conforming lot. But it sounds to me like we are now going to build three additional non-conforming lots. And I don't see where is that a benefit for Belmar to, to be building three non-conforming lots on, in this neighborhood?
If, if, if that's a question to me, you know, that, that rises and falls on the proofs that the applicant makes under what I would characterize as the C1 and C2 criteria. They're, they're permitted to make those applications and at least through the testimony of their professionals, their planner and engineer in this instance, to say, look, here is why we're permitted advantage of those provisions of the law, and here's what we propose to do that. It, it, I, I, I think the board is, is weighing this very carefully. They haven't made a determination, and those are the, some of the questions that they're going to have to grapple with as they go forward on this application.
Okay, fair enough.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see one more hand raised. April? No? Okay. Uh, at this point, uh, I want to poll the board. We're sitting here at a couple minutes after 10:00 PM. What is your appetite to continue with this application? Or would, is the board's preference to, um, carry this application to the next meeting? Um, regardless of what decision we make, I will be looking for board comments before we uh, carry this application. So what, uh, what is our appetite? Feel free to unmute your phone and let me know your thoughts. Mr. Burke, please.
Yeah, I think, uh, we've gone this long. I'd like to see us finish this, but the one we're gonna have next month's gonna be probably equally as long, so.
That's a good point.
Let's, let's, let's put this one, uh, put this one to rest and, and, and get it over with. I think I, I don't know what more else we can hear.
Okay, I, I'm fine with that. I just wanna poll real quick. Mr. Forte?
Uh, how many people do you have in the pub for the public discussion? Are we done with the public?
Yeah.
Okay, I would like to continue also.
Okay. Mr. Lindsay?
Go on.
Keep going, okay. Others, any comments? Nick, you're okay. Thumbs up. Tom? Keep going. Okay, Ted, you're okay? Look like you're pulling your hair out there. It looks like you at least got something to eat. Don't throw it. Okay. All right, very good. Professionals?
To the chair.
I'm good, Jay.
You're good?
If I could.
Okay.
To the chair, if I could. We were, we were, and again, I'm not trying to make this longer than it has to be, but we were limiting people to questions. People were questioning us whether they were gonna be given an opportunity to then make a comment. So we might have to, as we go along, my counsel to you is to make sure we, we follow through on those remarks, that people who were limited to just questions still be given an opportunity to make their comment on this application.
So if we're in it for the long haul, we should probably open it back up for comments to the public and then offer board comments, because I don't-
That would be my recommendation, so the board has the benefit of the public's comments as they go into their consideration of these matters.
Okay, so I know there were a couple who wanted to offer comments. I'll open it up at this point for, for the public to, uh, raise any comments you may have. And, uh, once again, please raise your hand, and April will bring you to the table. Same thing, provide your name, spell it, and provide your street address.
Hi, this is Lynn Winters. I'm 410 Seventh Avenue. Um, my comment is that if you follow the master plan, the master plan is very clear about this property. It is in the R-75 zone. It is in, on page 64 of the master plan. It is right smack in the middle of the yellow zone, which is low density. What the applicant is trying to do is really to get it to be, to follow the requirements of the R-50 zone, which is medium density. The master plan delineates this property on page nine on the storm surge map. It's part of that. On page 65, it's very clear with the intent there. It says that these should have stricter development guidelines, and the borough should encourage a reduction in residential uses or intensity of usage. In the zoning requirements on the back, and I don't have a page for it, but, um, it does state that the requirements for single-family housing in the R-50 zone may apply to single-family housing in the R-75 zone wherein the properties within the R-75 zone provide frontage along Ocean Avenue. This property does not. And these, the way they are intending to develop these properties does not fit in with the streetscape that is existing on Seventh Avenue. So I urge you to follow the master plan and to vote accordingly. There should be three homes on this whole block, not four. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winters. April, next, please.
Hi, this is Pam Pelicaro again. Um, I just wanna make a comment. I do feel that if the applicant built two additional houses, two additional, which would be a total of three, this would result, I mean, I just feel that, that this property should allow two lots based on the master plan and the zoning of R-75. I do request that no matter what the board does make, uh, no matter what the board decides tonight, that, um, there is a condition of approval that any house next to mine, because I am affected the most here, uh, be 10 feet from the property line next to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think there's one more member of the public, correct? April?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay. All right, at this point, uh, we're gonna roll.
One more. He just, he just raised his hand. Hold on.
Okay. I saw a hand over there. Okay. Mr. Racer?
Hey, this, this is Jeff Racer again. Um, thanks for hearing my, my comment, but, um, you know, hearing, uh, the generosity from the builders on behalf of the affected neighbors. Obviously, there's numerous neighbors within 200 feet of this, um, proposed. Uh, so, um, you know, you're, you're being very generous with the bishop. You're being very generous with, uh, 507, but you know, uh, I would like to know what are you going to do for the other neighbors who now have to look at this, uh, massive structure every day? Obviously, I, I agree with uh, many of the other, uh, commenters who believe that this, this area should hold three homes, not four. But if it is going to hold four, I believe that the other neighbors within 200 feet of these proposed homes should have some, uh, benefit afforded to them, not just me, but all of the neighbors. And so I would like to know what will you do aside from, um, improve, improving the aesthetic, uh, of the neighborhood as you, um, stated?
I have no idea what Mr. Racer has in mind.
I'd love to hear some suggestions.
Uh, cand- candidly, I think we're setting forth to Mr. Racer, and I don't wanna get on a hype ball, but when you do this as many times as I have over 25 years in Belmar, assisting in Belmar's redevelopment, probably one of the reasons why you moved to this town as opposed to that was 25 years ago. We look at what exists on, on this property. This is a monolith that takes up about 70 to 75% of impervious coverage on this lot. Very high building coverage on this lot. Very little, uh, flow of water into the ground, impervious, as we would like it to be, as exists. It's a non-conform, with very due respect to, uh, Ms. Bell, the planner. And Ms. Bell will tell you 101 planning. She told us some things, but she'll tell you 101 planning. She will say, if we have an opportunity to get rid of a over-built, over-impervious, over-building coverage, non-conforming use that exists, that's exactly what the master plan desires, exactly what intentions of master plans are, and it's exactly what we're doing within reason. We've come great distances. We're not looking for, uh, high-density. If you, if you, uh, watch any of our zoning boards, people are coming with 50% building coverage, 60% building coverage, impervious coverage around 80%, floor area ratio approximating 90, 100%. That's not what we bring to this board. Could have brought it, we could have brought it to a different board, the zoning board, who routinely grant that. We did not form shock. We brought it for these reasonable individuals on the planning board, and they know they're getting rid of a non-conforming use to bring this property conforming. Now, if you have some realistic-
Well, it's not conforming.
You have a realistic suggestion and say, could you do this? Or it might make it better for me if you did that. I'm willing to listen. But just an open end, that what are you doing for me? That's not how we entertain these applications.
Well, it's not what are you doing for me. It's what are you doing for the neighborhood and for us?
I'm taking, I'm taking over a non-conforming use that's an eyesore to the neighborhood.
And replacing it with three non-conforming lots.
Modest home.
Non-conforming, and you're making it non-conforming.
Nothing further with Mr. Racer.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I see others, please. Mr. Connolly?
Yeah, Dan Connolly, 706 D Street. I'd like to hear, uh, Ms. Bell's response to, uh, Mr. Shipley's, uh, comments.
If she has any.
Christine, would you like to unmute and, and offer comments?
Sure. Um, so one of the goals of zoning typically is to, you know, if you're doing redevelopment or creating new development, you do want to make lots and uses conforming with the zone standards. Um, but as stated, uh, churches are conditional use in the zone district. Off the top of my head, I don't know all of the uses associated with them. I believe, uh, the applicant provided testimony that there was eight, um, existing non-conformities with the site, uh, with the church being there. Uh, because it is a conditional use, if they were to apply for that type of approval today, they would go to the zoning board. Um, but the applicant is also creating a number of new variances and requesting variance relief for a number of new variances. So while there are existing non-conforming conditions there, they're also proposing non-conforming conditions.
Mr. Chairman, may I follow up with Ms. Bell?
Please.
Ms. Bell, um, wonderful to meet you this evening. Ms. Bell, in, in your training, uh, your experience, and I suspect a lot of reports you've written over the years, minor bulk variances are much more easier to grant and don't interfere with the intensive master plans as use variances. Yes or no?
I mean, I think every application stands on its own merit. Um, and a minor bulk variance I would consider to be, you know, a side yard setback perhaps, or a, you know, uh, something of that nature, and every variance that, um, is being requested, the proofs need to be met in order for that to be granted. Um, and that's the applicant's burden to prove, you know, what they're proposing is a better zoning alternative and the positive criteria outweighs the negative criteria. Um, I don't know if I would characterize your application as, um, minor bulk variances, since there are so many of them.
What if I reduce six of them? Or do you count them? Is it a numerical thing, or, or is one in particular far more important than another?
Well, in this instance, you're proposing three lots that don't meet the standard. None of your lots meet the standards of the zone district. So I think both Mr. Kovats and I, um, earlier stated, you know, if there were less variances, I think that would be more in line with the characteristics of the neighborhood and the zone district and really what the borough's master plan is looking for.
Let me suggest this. We did this for a consideration of, of end users to have a 38-foot setback instead of 40. If I offered to eliminate three, um, non-conformities, I think that would be a better alternative, and I think that would make Mr. Forte think there are less variances that bring this more conformity. Would you agree?
So if you're reducing the minimum rear yard setback, you're saying if you're removing that variance from-
Yeah, on lots 01, 02, 03. I've just eliminated two, two-foot variances.
So that is a reduction in the variances, um, but you are creating, before you even get to, you know, what, what is being put on the lot, you're creating, uh, three lots that don't meet the lot area of the zone district. Um, you're proposing uh, coverage over what's permitted in the zone district. You're proposing the lot, lot shape requirement, minimum diameter. Um, you're requesting a variance for that. So there are a number of other variances.
What if I, what if I reduced, and by making my house a little smaller by moving in my rear yard setback, I only have to reduce 2.7 of building coverage to be in- building coverage to be in conformity and max out my three lots at 30%? I've just given you six variances to bring this more into conformity. Now, all you're dealing with is just effectively the size of the lot. And on that point, what's the difference between a 30% lot coverage on a 7,500 square foot lot versus 35% on three lots? It's still the same amount of coverage and density on the property, is it not?
I think that what you choose, the application you choose to put forward, I can't tell you, you know, what you should or should not apply for.
I have no more questions, thank you. Mr. Chairman, though, I will move at this juncture, three things. I'm going to move to amend my application for the better, I think for the town, to cap building coverage and eliminate the three variances at 30% on lots 01, 02, 03. I'm going to equally increase the rear yard setbacks from 38 feet to 40 feet on those same three lots. In addition to assist the very nice lady and husband, I would suggest no objection to a restriction in the resolution that would move the structure on lot 1.03, five feet to the east, creating a 10-foot side yard setback to the nice man and woman to the west. So moved.
Thank you. We'll make those a condition of the application, correct?
That's in the spirit of, I'd like a unanimous vote, and I'm trying to satisfy the neighbors and everyone on the board. This should be a, not a no-brainer, but this is a, some thought, this is a right application for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Connolly, any other comments? I still see, I see you're up.
Yes, my only concern is here we are at 10:20, and we're making amendments. We're making amendments that cannot really truly be discussed. That's just my, that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, no one else? April, before I close, public comment?
Nope, nobody else.
Okay. I'll close public comment portion of the meeting and open it up to board comments. Mr. Cavelli, I'm gonna start with you, even though I'm sorry you're grabbing a little bite to eat, but we're gonna roll across the screen as I see them, so their comments, please, before we roll through the group.
Um, yeah, so this is my first foray. And I guess I'm a little conflicted, because I think I understand both sides. But I do see how the, at least from the street and as far as the width of the individual, of the three properties, fits in with, you know, most of the other properties in the area, so. I think with the reduction in variances and the changes that the applicant is suggesting, you know, I don't have any real questions. I think that that's definitely set in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Forte?
Just a couple of comments. The planning board is to grant the least amount of relief, not the most relief. The planning board cannot change the master plan per se, that is zoning, by changing an R75 zone into an R50 zone, as I feel the applicant is proposing. The big picture is what is more in line with the master plan? And we cannot get distracted by the minutia, the fencing, the plantings, the papers, the amendments, it's a distraction. I believe the borough of Belmar will be better served with two homes rather than three. It better confirms, conforms to the master plan, which is the key to this whole thing. There'd be no alleys needed, there'd be less variances needed, it would conform better to homes in the area. The backyard would be bigger. And if the houses were 60-foot wide, which would be the maximum they were allowed, if you consider the site, the setbacks, so what? It's legal. If that's what the borough of Belmar says, it will work and it's legal, that's fine. Okay, but most importantly, the site can be developed with adherence to our master plan by building two homes, not three. I agree, there should be a change to the church, the church is not used, I agree a change is necessary or wanted. I agree the houses are what is needed and zoned for, it's in a residential zone. I agree that the bishop's house should be kept. But three homes on a substandard lot, basically, and that's the whole key, is not justified. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forte. Mr. Lindsay?
I think Mr. Forte just said a lot of things that are important. As did Tom, it's a project that needs to go forward, however. Like it or not, the property has been, is being sold, it has to be, it needs to be redeveloped. I think there's good faith on all sides here for the most part. And in terms of the concept of the minutia, the devil always is in the details, as we know. But my only observation on many of the public comments, people that live around a property feel very much more emotional about it than those of us that don't. I think the project needs to move forward and make adjustments as is needed to try to accommodate, you know, the master plan and everything else. It's not easy to get these things done, and please, everybody in Belmar. I do believe the project needs to move forward, and so I advocate that that's be done.
Thank you. Mr. Valente? Gotta come off a mute Ted.
Okay, I think Mr. Lindsay summarized there, there are two sides to every coin and that there is an issue of a nonconforming use of building demolition and the possibility of the church community seeking other options and living across the the street from where the, in a condo where the White House is being proposed, you know, what could be proposed as an alternative? I think something needs to be done, and I agree with Mr. Lindsay that with some modifications, this can go forward.
Thank you. Now Ted, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got your early, go ahead Ted, please.
Yeah, I just think it's a little too dense for the neighborhood. I'm not a big fan of the easement going across the back, and I just don't think it's gonna really fit the area.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Yes, first of all, I was born and raised a Methodist and went to a Methodist school, so I don't like to see any Methodist church or facility closed down, but since that has become a reality, I think we have to be faced with. What's practical and what's practical-bull? There's a difference there. You think of the master plan, that's the practical solution to things, that's the standard, that's what's usually done. And one of the reasons that planning boards and zoning boards exist is because it doesn't always fit the cookie cutter, you know, outline, and that's why we're here. So we have to take a look at what's the best use of this property. And I personally think that the plan, well, you know, it has some, it has some issues and it has some problems. I think that the application as presented is the best solution that we could come up with. When this, when this was used as a, as a community center and a senior center, I spent many a day there. And I'm sort of familiar with the neighborhood, I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with the property right next door where the husband and wife live, because I would look right out at the side of their house from the senior center. And I would also, since it was very boring sometimes, look across the street and see the houses that are there. So I'm sort of familiar with the character of that neighborhood. And frankly, I think three houses would better fit the character of that neighborhood than two giant houses. I think they would be the ones that would look out of place. I think that there's a, you know, that being said, I also think there's a lot to be said for the fact that we're reducing the impervious surfaces by some 25%, I think 24%. I think the parking has always been one of my issues, I think that the plan did a nice job dealing with that, prevent curb cuts on Seventh Avenue, which actually increases parking, not decreases parking. If you had to put curb cuts in there, you have less parking on Seventh Avenue now. And like I said, I think overall, the character of the neighborhood would best be served by three houses and the bishop's house, as opposed to two gigantic houses there. I just think they would, they would look out of place. My comments.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Mr. Campbell, please.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Burke has said everything that I'm pretty much agreeing with. There are some obvious things also we're not talking about. Number one, the builders on this, we know, they've been in front of the planning board before. I've never seen a project that North End Builders has put into a neighborhood where it has not improved the neighborhood, and I defy anybody to show me one. That doesn't mean they get a cart punch on any project that they do, but you also have to go on the history of the people you're dealing with. I think the good-natured offerings to get rid of the variances and also to help the neighbors shows that, and I think that is going to help the neighborhood. I agree with Mr. Burke completely, that I think three North End Builders homes in that area is going to improve the area. That's just my opinion. I think the project needs to move forward. The other side of the coin, with having two large homes, or even worse, larger complexes there, is not what the neighborhood is going to look better with. I don't mean to disrespect the neighborhood that's going to be in the immediate area, but my opinion is I would love to see North End Builders go in there, do what they do best. I believe that Mary does a great job with the developing of the plan. I think North End will execute it well, and I think Mr. Shipers has proven that he cares about the neighborhood and going and moving forward at as late an hour as 10:20. So I agree with what the man's saying, it was 10:20, it's being done, but I also agree that's how this is done. We talk, we negotiate, and we come to a point. So I want to move forward, and I think it's going to be the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, in the essence of time, I'm not gonna reiterate what my colleagues, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Burke just said. I too hate to see that church go. I, you know, I've been sitting on this board for 17 years or so, and I'm, I'm usually the guy that, you know, less is more. But in this case, I think it's the right thing to do at this, at this juncture. So I'm in favor of the plan, especially with the concessions that Mr. Shipers has made in real time and the conditions that we have put forth.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Arcasi? Sal, we can't hear you. I see you're off mute, but I can't hear you. Sal? Yeah, I don't think we're, there's something wrong technically, Sal, I'm sorry, but we're not gonna be able to take your comments. April, there's nothing we're missing, right? Unfortunately, I don't think we're gonna be able to get his comments.
No, it's something on his end.
Okay.
If you want, you can email them to me.
And we can read those, okay. I'll offer my comments. First off, thanks to all those members of the public and the professionals who sat here till 10:30, four and a half hours of dedicated time, that speaks a lot for the community and the commitment. There's a lot to discuss here, and certainly, I think it's been made very clear by the bishop and by Mr. Shipers that there is a change, despite Mr. Burke's concerns, there will be a change in this church. And one way or the other, there's gonna be movement on this property. And I think the bishop's done quite a bit of legwork in terms of identifying who he felt were the best candidate to try to move forward with this. And the struggle certainly is that when you look at this and you look to have what would be three conforming lots, to Mr. Shiper's comments, and they weren't threats, they were true comments, that based on, you know, his particular, his particular layout and what those lots could look like, as are bright, you could see a 60-foot wide home there. And to Mr. Burke's comments, I do believe that that would look out of place. And I know there are some people that feel like that might be nice, but it would look enormous when compared to...
I'll email it. I have more time to think about it.
So, the...
It's over here.
I think we have Sal.
Let me finish my comments now, and then you can jump in if you can mute him for a second, April. From my perspective, although late coming, the concessions that Mr. Shiper's brought forward certainly make it a more compelling application. I do also appreciate the fact that he was able to give some additional relief, although not required to do so, on the property to the west, and I think it was Pamela and Mike, I'm sure they're they're pleased with she had asked for that 10-foot setback, so that was encouraging. I do agree that I think when you're looking at these properties, knowing what, what North End Builders can produce, I do think that they're gonna be an attractive look. I still don't like the rear alley, just because of some of the concerns in kind of maintaining that. But at the same time, I think a couple, you know, adding two more curb cuts on the face of Seventh to try to bring a driveway along the side of the properties would entertain another set of complexities that we haven't really thought through here. I think that's my only concern with this application is that rear driveway, I think there's a lot of benefits of it, but at the same time, I still think there's, there's concerns with how that's gonna be maintained and those agreements is really dependent on good neighbors, and I think unfortunately, that's where it's gonna come to. But all in all, given the additional relief and the conditions that we talked through over the last four hours, and I'm hoping Mr. Kovats can summarize those, I'd be in favor of this application. So, Sal, if you don't mind pulling yourself back off a mute, I'd like to hear your comments.
Can you hear me?
We can, Sal, please.
This has been a nightmare. I just, just can't get my picture or voice going, it's taking me hours. I heard everything. Both sides have interesting stories. I agree with Mike Campbell. North Builders does wonderful, wonderful houses. Bill Shiper presented himself fully. I understand, I get it, but for me, I think we're gonna stick with the master plan. Everyone made great comments and answered all the questions that I needed, wanted to present, but I'm gonna stick with the master plan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Arcasi.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Kovats, would you please summarize? I'm sorry? Go ahead, please. Mr. Kovats?
Very good. Okay. This is an application for final major subdivision, basically taking an existing property and creating four lots. The applicant has amended their application this evening as a result of hearing comments. To that extent, they're basically saying that they will not exceed the 30% building coverage for lots 1.01, 1.02, 1.03, and that for each of those lots, again, 1.01, 1.02, 1.03, they will provide a 40-foot rear yard. The applicant has also agreed that the side yard between lot two and lot 103, instead of a five-yard setback, they're gonna provide a 10-yard setback. So they're gonna be, there's gonna be some modifications, they'll be obliged. So they're going to be, there's going to be some modifications and they'll be obliged as a condition of their approval to resubmit their drawings, conforming with those eliminations, just to make sure we haven't missed anything by way of other conditions of approval. I've recorded the following. You feel free, if you haven't heard something that you believe we committed to, to ask the chair to make a comment. The applicant is going to agree that the structures once constructed, that they're going to be of an architectural pleasing design. They're not going to look like cookie cutter homes, you know, pressed for the same mold. With regards to lawn areas, in many instances, what we do is we place language in there that, though we don't have a landscaping plan, there's going to be landscaping that will provide for green grassed areas to discourage basically someone just wholesale putting in stone. I, I understand the chair's comments before about sometimes stone in garden beds saves you from having to do a bunch of weeding, but by and large, green grassed lawn areas and Mr. Shipers has also agreed that there will be notification and we will put in language that be appropriate landscaping consistent with the landscape and design standards of the borough, even though that they have not submitted a landscape plan at this point in time. The applicant has agreed that they're going to place, even though it's not indicated, pervious pavers at the site with regard to the pool area. The applicant has agreed that there will be a three-side structure where we know bathrooms, it will be attached to the accessory garage structure and that the, I guess the area that's indicated concrete around the pool at this point in time will be pervious paper, paper. To the extent that they can, they will investigate and make sure that where it's appropriate to save street trees, and they can do so, they will make accommodations to do that, coordination with the engineer. They have also agreed that they will work with the engineer to design systems to allow for the roof runoff. And again, it's just the roof runoff that the applicant has agreed to, to make sure that that is, that that's captured and not necessarily put into the same drainage system.
I think the comment there was there that Mr. DeFalco made, I think, was that for that roof runoff, he would look for the ability to basically have that recharge with maybe overflow going into the storm pipe system that he has designed. Is that?
I think, I think my comments were that he was looking to place, to coordinate the stormwater management and where they could to place dry wells in the front yard. After the roof runoff, to the extent that they could. They're still designing a system to provide for stormwater management. There will be a condition of approval based upon one of the comments by the members of the public that I did not hear any objection to, that the applicant, as far as the conditions of approval, will be obliged on a periodic basis to submit an appropriate writing for the borough engineers review, designating or at least providing for how they're satisfying those conditions and making appropriate provisions to satisfy those conditions. The applicant has agreed that we're appropriately opposed performance guarantees in the amounts that are required by Borough after consultation with the Borough Engineer.
Doug, there was one other I just want to ask Mr. Shipers. There was one particular member of the public, I think Ms. Renner, who spoke of a tree that was dedicated to someone from Montessori's. I'm not sure if there is the ability, but would you be willing to try to save that tree and relocate on site as a condition?
If Ms. Renner would let me know what tree that is and it, it is not a material issue, are we talking about the big tree that's?
No, that's a street tree, that, not the one between the sidewalk and curb. It's got to be somewhere on the property itself, though.
Looking at all of the photos.
Mr. Campbell seems to be raising his hand.
Another tree. We'll, we'll, we'll work with her, but I don't see another tree.
Yeah, if possible. I'll just leave it as if possible, because I don't see another tree either as I look at the front or the side. It appears to be just shrubs.
It's hard to agree to what you can't, I mean, there's a little atrium amongst all those big buildings. I don't know if there's a tree inside of an atrium in the middle of the property, but.
I'll just leave it as if possible.
Mr. Campbell may have a comment to the chair?
Yes, please, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. If they do have a tree there, and Ms. Renner is correct, and I'm sure she is, and it cannot be relocated on the property itself, it just will not fit. May I also suggest that we do move it to the lake and put it as one of the shade tree, trees that which they plant around the lake every year anyway. And we could put it up there and save the tree and still have a memorial for the family.
That's a terrific idea, Mr. Campbell. Thank you. As a backup plan, I would ask Mr. Shipers to agree to that, assuming once again, we can identify this tree.
Yeah, I'm not much of a horticulturist. Am I moving it or is Mr. Campbell volunteering?
I love you, I love you, Mr. Shipers, but we'll get Bill to do that one.
All right. With Mr. Campbell's backing, I will certainly agree to work towards that end with he and anyone else.
Thank you. To that end, there have been no other modifications, although there have been clarifications that the structures will be residential structures of three to four bedrooms of approximately three thousand thirty-five hundred square feet. That's your application this evening. A yes vote is a vote of approval by way of background. The applicant is seeking relief by way of C-one criteria and C-two criteria. I may, not, not that there's been affirmative statement as to that effect, but I, from the proofs that are, that have been presented, the board can look to the C-one criteria to the extent the applicant has basically offered proof, present to you that they're trying to save the existing residential dwelling. As explained in a response to Mr. Forte's questions once before, that, that an applicant can use that as a basis for hardship because of existing structures lawfully on site. As to the C-two criteria, again, this is something that is, the applicant is allowed to take advantage of. Basically, it's articulated in our engineer's report as to the criteria. Under the C-two, it's the applicant offering a zone plan based upon the existing conditions at the site that works better than what is originally proposed for the area, to the extent that they get to take advantage of the C-one criteria. And they have the alternative of the C-two has been articulated by certain board members and I think by Mr. DeFalco that as you take a look at these properties from the front, most of them are fifty foot in width. If you were to design something that simply met the R seventy-five criteria, you're not going to design something on, on that property that's going to meet the corner lot criteria, either seventy-five or, I'm sorry, the corner lot criteria for the R seventy-five zone, which requires nine thousand square feet. You're not going to be able to cobble that together. They've offered a plan that says this is more consistent. We're taking a look at the front of the building with the other properties that are developed, notwithstanding the fact that it doesn't have the depth of those properties. As I say, that is, that is generally the basis. You have to be able to make that finding that they qualify for those variances that have been articulated and been readjusted. I won't burden the record at this point in time that they're entitled to that relief and that to do so will not be resulting in substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinances. A yes vote is a positive vote for those eligible to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kovats. And I have a motion to approve the application with the conditions as summarized by Mr. Kovats. Yes, please.
Before the motion, I would ask if I could indulge two questions or a comment, a corrective comment to Mr. Kovats and a question.
Please.
Thank you. Mr. Kovats, I know it was a misspoke when you talked about ten feet on the lot that is going to move, the, the structure that's going to move, you said ten yards. So.
No, I, I, thank you very much, Mr. Shipers. Ten yards is very generous, but.
Yes, exactly.
I think, I think you agreed to ten feet on that.
That second, this is really, I guess, a parliamentary question. I have a record to protect. I don't know who is out there who may challenge the findings of this board. I note we have ten people. We have two alternates. How does the voting proceed?
The voting proceeds this evening with the regular members voting and the alternates, if we don't have sufficient members, can then vote.
Oh, okay. And do we have sufficient members?
April?
Yes, we have ten people and we only need nine to vote.
And who is our alternate that will not be voting?
Sal.
Sal, okay. And the cat is okay. Very good.
Thank you for allowing me to protect the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to approve the application with the conditions as summarized by Mr. Kovats?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Campbell was a first, a second. Mr. Burke, seconded.
Okay.
Hi.
Mr. Forte? He's on mute.
No.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Valente?
Yes.
The Protonentis?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Carvelli?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
And Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Application is approved.
On behalf of myself and Bishop John and the church, we thank you for your time, your energy, your effort, your consideration and also your approval. If I might just indulge for one moment, I didn't want to bring it up beforehand. I would ask everyone say a prayer for my dear friend, Mark Andorol, who was a victim of the shooting with the judge, his wife and Judge Salas, and God rest his son Daniel. Everyone be safe, please.
Amen.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Can I get a second, Mr. Campbell? Thank you. All in favor?
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
We'll see you all soon.
April, are you still on?
I am.
April, why does my vote count?
Because we, nine members make up a, a full board and you're an alternate, so you would only vote if one of the other nine couldn't.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll see everyone soon.
Bye.
Take care, everybody.